It's a blessing.
One minute.
You're honoring a most heroic person. What Marlon did is unbelievable and so far the whole story hasn't been told.
Hi folks, I'm gonna ask you to turn off the cameras until it comes up. If you if you forget to turn them off, I'll put them on for you.
Thirty seconds. Ten seconds.
Can you hear me?
Welcome to the City of Foster City Estero municipal improvement district regular meeting of Tuesday, September eighth, twenty twenty six thirty P M. Pursuant to the governor's order, this meeting will be held by teleconference and video conference only. The public may participate by joining the Zoom meeting and submitting their public comments in a live meeting format. Any email sent to public comment at fostercity.org will be provided to the city council. Prior to the meeting and email sent after the start of the meeting will be provided after the meeting. Pursuant to the Ralph M. Brown Act's government code, all votes shall be by roll call due to all council members participating by teleconference.
Thank you. I call the meeting to order. Could you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? Please stand, place your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Council members, ex officio EMI directors, Richa Owasty. Here. John Frumman.
Here.
Sanjay Ghani.
Here.
Sam Hindi.
Here.
And Mayor President Catherine Mahonpour.
I'm here. Thank you much. Next item, please.
Item four, special presentations, four point one, a proclamation declaring September twenty twenty as National Emergency Preparedness Month.
Thank you. I have asked Councilmember Hindi if he'd like to present that proclamation.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's an honor to present the proclamation of the City of Foster City. National Emergency Preparedness Month, September twenty twenty. Whereas the U S Department of Homeland Security first sponsored National Emergency Preparedness Month in two thousand and four. As a nationwide effort to increase personal preparedness for emergencies and large scale disasters in local communities. And whereas National Emergency Preparedness Month provides an opportunity to remind us all that we all must prepare ourselves and our families now and throughout the year. And focus on planning with an overarching theme, disasters don't wait, make your plan today. And whereas the City of Foster City is uniquely situated between San Francisco and San Jose and the western shoreline of the San Francisco Bay. And the San Francisco Bay is vulnerable to large scale emergencies. And whereas the San Mateo Consolidated Fire offers free training through the Community Emergency Response Training CERT program. To help both citizens and people working in Foster City to become more prepared for emergencies. And whereas ongoing emergency preparedness is a responsibility of every citizen and civic organization and as such. All citizens and civic organizations are urged to make preparedness a priority and work together. As a team to ensure that individuals, families and communities are prepared for disasters and emergencies of any type. And whereas the City of Foster City is furthering preparedness efforts by supporting the San Mateo Consolidated Fire Department's effort. To increase engagement of our multilingual community through free public education courses offered in multiple languages. And whereas National Emergency Preparedness Month is also an opportunity to pay tribute to America's first responders who put themselves at risk for the safety of their fellow citizens. Now therefore I, Sam Hindi, on behalf of Mayor Catherine Mahonpour and the city council. Do hereby proclaim September twenty twenty as National Emergency Preparedness Month in the City of Foster City. And call upon all citizens and civic organizations to evaluate and update their plans for a large scale emergency and its aftermath. And I believe with us I see Janelle Masterson is here to accept and I'll turn it back to Mayor Mahonpour. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Janelle. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and councilmembers for recognizing National Preparedness Month and for allowing me to accept the proclamation on behalf of San Mateo Consolidated Fire Department. Many people have been using the term unprecedented to describe the events of the last six months in our community and throughout the country. Of course, the pandemic has been the largest impact on our daily lives, but other events, including the recent C Z U lightning complex fire. The poor air quality, the heat waves, the power outages, all of those things have complicated our lives even more. So we recognize those impacts are really overwhelming for a lot of people in our community. And that's what makes National Preparedness Month this year with its theme disasters don't wait, make your plan today even more important. So we do believe that preparedness starts at home. And here at S M C Fire, we have a lot of opportunities for the community to access preparedness information, learn life saving skills. A lot of these resources are on our website, smcfire.org backslash N P M for National Preparedness Month. And you can take advantage of those resources and also take our survey on preparedness. And when enter to win a free personal personal preparedness kit. And we're also really excited to announce that our first hybrid online CERT program begins tomorrow. We have been overwhelmed with a hundred and twenty five participants. This is a record setting class. It's going to be modified, so we're taking an online program that people can take at their leisure and then we're having weekly office hours so that people can ask us questions. We can share local information. And when it's safe to do so in phase four, we'll be offering our well-known skills day activities. So we also welcome the community to take advantage of our two hour get ready class. That's on Thursday, September seventeenth at six thirty and registration is also available for that online. I'd also like to take one moment to share some gratitude for our S M C F D CERT members. Since April, we have had over sixty volunteers provide over twelve hundred hours of service to our communities in many different ways. The largest contribution has been through serving as senior population in San Mateo for their senior lunch delivery program. But we've had a lot of other programs here in Foster City as well, including a social bridging project that that some of our CERT members are taking part of with income in connection with the state we've also helping with over the months. And so we're just really, really grateful for that participation. And we continue to enrich our CERT program by offering additional volunteer leadership opportunities and continuing education for those members. And lastly, I'd like to acknowledge our S M C F D O E S team, Sandra Furpo, Casey Treadway. All of our firefighting personnel who have been out there on the front lines deployed, doing the work in these fires. They really are heroes and they're working, they're out there on behalf of all the people who really need them in their worst hour. And so thank you to to all those folks who have been really stepping up. And to all of you, thank you for making preparedness a priority in Foster City. And we look forward to answering your questions and serving the community this year. And and please, everyone remember disasters don't wait. There's no time like today. Make your plan today. And and we hope that we can all get through this together. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm happy to hear that the CERT program is going to continue. So at least online, that's that's good news. Because it's a fabulous program. As you know, I went through it and I survived. And it was a very interesting training session. So I'm I'm really glad that you're able to continue that online. So thank you very much for all the hard work that you're doing and we certainly do appreciate it. Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Hindi, did you have a few words?
Madam Mayor, yes, please. I think it's only befitting to take this opportunity. A call of thank you and gratitude to our firefighters who are literally putting their lives on the front line to protect ours. And obviously, we have been dealing with the COVID, many first responders, whether police or fire has been responding, taking care of our communities. So just a shout out and gratitude really for them putting their lives to protect us. Much gratitude, much thanks.
Very definitely. It's an important job and they're doing it. They're getting it done. Thank you, Janelle. Next item, please.
Item four point two, a proclamation celebrating the eightieth anniversary of Hill Barn Theater.
And I have asked Councilmember Frumman if he'd like to present this proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor, for this honor. A proclamation of the City of Foster City celebrating the eightieth anniversary of Hill Barn Theater. Whereas Hill Barn Theater was first developed from the Peninsula Little Theater that was founded at the College of San Mateo in nineteen thirty six by Robert Bronze and Sam Rolfe. And whereas originally located in the Pingray Barn in San Mateo in nineteen forty, Hill Barn Theater permanently moved to Foster City in nineteen sixty eight. Where it is current where it currently sits on land donated by the T. Jack Foster family. And whereas between nineteen seventy eight and nineteen ninety eight, Hill Barn Theater lost its founders and the support of the College of San Mateo. Following this difficult time, a revitalization began that earned its executive director, Lee Foster, the two thousand and eight Bravo Award from Congresswoman Jackie Speer. And whereas since nineteen ninety five, Hill Barn Theater has won many awards, including Theater Critics Circle Award, three Dean Goodman Awards for Artistic Excellence, a Foster City Honors Award, and was honored with several mayoral proclamations for excellence in theatrical production and education. And whereas in the early two thousands, the Hill Barn Conservatory was created for the purpose of training children year round in theater arts and building performance performers and audiences of the future. And is led by Randy O'Hara since two thousand and eighteen. And whereas Dan Deimers, the current executive artistic director, joined Hill Barn Theater in two thousand and twelve. And under his tenure, Hill Barn Theater has been nominated for many Bay Area Theater Critics Circle Awards. And won the Theater Bay Area Award Awards for several productions. And whereas by obtaining grants from foundations and corporate donors and successful fundraising efforts, Hill Barn has made several improvements to its building since two thousand. And local groups such as the Lions Club, Rotary Club and Peninsula Jewish Community Center of Foster City have been loyal supporters of the Hill Barn Theater, helping to ensure its continued success. And whereas through its mission to create theater with the community for the community, Hill Barn Theater delivers performances that promote creativity, honest artistic expression and excellent production value. And benefits the cultural life of Foster City residents and all who experience its theatrical productions. Now therefore I, John Frumman, on behalf of Catherine Mahonpour, Mayor of the City of Foster City, on behalf of the city council, commend Hill Barn Theater on their eightieth anniversary, recognize their inspiring work of bringing theater arts to our community and extend our best wishes for many years of continued success in the future.
Thank you. I see Dan Demers is here. If he would like to speak, then.
Hi, yes. Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers and staff. I wanted to take a moment and express my deepest thanks for this wonderful honor and celebration of our eightieth anniversary season. You know, it's moments like this that infuse a profound amount of hope in our community. As Foster City's very own theater company, we dedicate and pledge ourselves to continue to engage the wonderful people who reside here in Foster City and beyond and provide them with what little respite and entertainment and education we can during these economic times. Theater at its heart is about community and it's our job not only to heal the human spirit, but to promote the ability for us to walk around in other people's shoes, share a few hours together and experience something together. We're not able to do that right now, but soon we will be able to and Hill Barn will be here when we are able to again. From our board of directors, our staff and our community, I would like to thank all of you again for this, your leadership, your kindness and this amazing honor. Special thanks to Councilmember Frumman. I wish to express to you very special thanks for spearheading this gift to not only the theater but the community as well. Thank you all so much for the opportunity to speak tonight and I hope to see you at the theater soon.
Thank you. I certainly hope that the theater is able to open up soon as well. The shows there that have been put on in the past have just been wonderful. And hopefully we'll all be able to gather again real soon. Thank you. Next item, please.
Four point three, a proclamation honoring the late Marlon Townsend.
So I am going to present this proclamation of the City of Foster City honoring the late Marlon Townsend. Whereas Marlon Townsend contributed dedicated and loyal service as a captain in the U S Navy, councilmember for City of Foster City and community volunteer. And whereas born on November eleventh nineteen twenty seven, Marlon Townsend joined the U S Navy Flight Training Program. In June nineteen forty five, was designated a naval aviator in September nineteen forty eight and served in the Korean War onboard the U S S Valley Forge. And whereas Marlon Townsend has a Bachelor of Aeronautical Engineering degree from Georgia Tech and a Master of Science in Aeronautical Engineering from Princeton University. And has been awarded, among others, the Distinguished Flying Cross, the Bronze Star, the Air Medal, the Navy Commendation and Navy Unit Commendation Medals. And whereas Marlon Townsend was elected to the City Council of Foster City in nineteen ninety three, served as Vice Mayor in nineteen ninety five and two thousand and three and as Mayor of Foster City in two thousand and one and two thousand and four. And whereas Marlon Townsend devoted his time and talent to the City of Foster City and earned the respect, admiration and friendship of all the citizens of our community through his leadership and commitment. And whereas Marlon Townsend's numerous achievements during his tenure on the city council, including his commitment to the progress and success of Foster City and its residents, are remembered many years after his retirement in two thousand and five. And whereas Marlon Townsend's passing on July twenty eighth, twenty twenty leaves our community with a deep feeling of sorrow for the loss of such an honored and respected citizen. Now therefore I, Catherine Mahonpour, Mayor of the City of Foster City, on behalf of the city council, do hereby extend to the members of his family this expression of sincere regret for their loss. And the hope that they will be consoled by the memories of Marlon Townsend for his accomplishments and dedication to the residents of Foster City and to his country. Thank you so much. I think there's a friend or family member in the audience if they would like to speak. I guess not. Do we have any raised hands, Rob?
We do not.
Okay.
I think Gil is muted.
Oh.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm I I don't see my picture there, so I are you here? This is Gil Borghardt. Are you hearing me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Oh, what what a wonderful, wonderful presentation. On behalf of the widow Marilyn Townsend, we appreciate deeply what you're doing. She is not computer literate. So I am speaking on behalf of her. I and a number of people have been meeting on Friday noons with Marlon for the last twenty years. I don't know. But my association with Marlon has been as a naval aviator. I did not know him as the mayor. Although I've heard nothing but fine reports about him. As a naval aviator, we're all together together and we respect each other deeply. As you've just heard, Marlon Townsend's resume is unimpeachable. It's unbelievable. It's something that all naval aviators dream about, but do not have the opportunity to achieve. And his time as the commanding officer of the Kitty Hawk is unsuperb. He just it's amazing what what the man has done. There's a group of us that meet every Friday for lunch. We even do it now virtually. And we supported Marlon from the day he could walk into lunch to the day he could no longer do that. And then we would talk to him or go over to his home afterwards and talk to him. So want to thank you for so much recognizing such a wonderful, wonderful and talented and dedicated, my God, what a dedicated man, Marlon Townsend. And thank his wife Marilyn for her support. She has just been superb. And thank you, the board, for your support and recognition of Marlon Townsend. Thank you.
Thank you. The I just wanted to say a few words. The first time I met Marlon Townsend was in twenty fifteen when I was running. And he was so kind in meeting with me, he and his wife Marilyn. And we talked about a lot of things and we talked about the history of Foster City a lot too. So it was a very interesting conversation that or two that I told. And he was always very kind and and very nice in helping me out, learn about the history of Foster City. And I really appreciated that. Anybody else have a few words? Yes, Councilmember Hindi.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I I'm like you. I met Marlon in twenty fifteen. And what impressed me the most about the man is, like you said, is just his willingness to meet, learn, what is it we trying to do, and more importantly, share with us his experience. Not only he shared with us with me, not only his experience in the city and what is it that he had done that benefited the city and what is it we should look for. He really shared with me the bigger things and it struck me really, this man, not just his service to our community, which was great and everybody benefited from it, but also his service to our nation. And here you have a giant who, again, we were talking about emergency first responders putting their lives on the line and Marlon with his military record and service clearly goes beyond that even in in ways unimaginable, deployed overseas and so forth. And to Marilyn, I'm so sorry for your loss and just want to let you know that we are here for you. We are your extended and larger family. Anything that you need, feel free to reach out and you will not be alone. So thank you for letting us for for letting Marlon serve this community and it is our time to be of service to you. So thank you again.
Thank you. Anybody else on the council? Yes, Councilmember Frumman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a really quick word. I I had the pleasure of working with Marlon when I was on staff with the city back in his days on the city council. And I must say that based on the input we've been getting from our community over the last year or so, what they're looking for in our city council, Marlon Townsend certainly represented in his years on the city council, a true gentleman, a true leader, a person who respected others. Clearly necessary to achieve what he's achieved in his lifetime. Can't do that by ruling with an iron fist. You have to be a collaborative leader, which he was. And it was a it was a pleasure working actually for him at the time in the city. And somebody we can look to in our history as someone we can emulate as leaders within our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And and thank you again, Gil and Marilyn. It was it's great honor knowing Marlon Townsend. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item five, public. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on items not listed on the agenda. As a reminder, we're taking comments in a live meeting format. Anyone who wants to provide a public comment, please raise your hand during this time. This is for items not listed on the agenda. If you wish to speak on an item on the agenda, please wait until that item comes up to provide comment.
Thank you. I'm gonna give people a few minutes to figure out how to raise their hand.
Or better yet, if somebody on the phone, what do they need to do, Priscilla?
Press star nine.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, I don't see any hands. Do you, Rob?
I do not.
Okay, if there are no hands, let's move on. Next item, please.
Item six, city EMI consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council EMI board of directors and will be enacted by one motion unless removed by a member of the council board staffer public.
Thank you. We do have to pull item six point two point two because Vice Mayor Ghani needs to recuse himself from that because he lives, he has an office near the property.
Thank you, Mayor Mahonpour. I'd also like to pull six point two point one and six point two point three. I don't need staff report. Just have a question and comment on six point two point one and a question on six point two point three.
Okay, if you're not pulling it for you're pulling it for comments?
Yes.
Okay. So we will pull those three items. So let's vote on six point one point one, six point two point four and six point two point five, six point three point one, six point three point two, six point three point three and six point three point four. Do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, is she moved?
Yes.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Ghani?
Yes.
Hindi?
Yeah.
Owasty?
Yes.
Frumman?
Yes.
Mayor Mahonpour?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero with all council members voting yes.
Okay, thank you. So let's go back to six point two point one. You don't need a staff report?
No, Mayor Mahonpour, I don't.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. It's a question and then followed by a comment, you know, the the maximum maximum total contribution in table one doesn't add up to the annual contribution across ten years and, you know, for example, AYSO has contributed two hundred thousand and has a hundred and fifty thousand remaining over ten years. And the agreement allows for up to twenty thousand dollars per year. And the way the agreement structured is it could allow AYSO to pay five thousand dollars for nine years and make a balloon payment of a hundred and five thousand in the last year, which could cause challenges for their board from a from a management perspective of their funds. And so I totally understand that COVID's COVID's impacted sustainability in the near term. And so, you know, my first question is, you know, to to the city manager and to Director Lewis, did I understand that table correctly with regards to them being able to pay up to that amount but not required to pay that amount?
And and yes, Vice Mayor, that's my understanding of reading the staff report and also the agreement prepared by the city city attorney.
Got it. Okay, my my recommendation is to maybe backload minimum payments for the last seven years, the agreement. And structure the agreements that the first three years can have lower minimum payments and just cap them out at their maximum total contribution so that they can plan for it. We can as well. And if we recover from COVID sooner than expected, then ensure that these organizations desire to pay a little bit more than the minimum payment, payments can be made above the minimum amount.
Okay, and and so is the intent Vice Mayor to pull this item and have staff renegotiate and come back with new agreements with those terms?
You know, I think I'd like, I want to, you know, articulate this in front of council to see if they thought it would be of value to the organizations as well as to us from a planning perspective. And if we have the support of council, then yes.
So I think that offering this might be a good idea because of COVID nineteen and things that are going on right now, the situation. So I think it might be it might be a good solution for them.
So I know that Jen Liu, our Parks and Rec Director, has been the chief negotiator. I'd like her to chime in and talk about the negotiations with the sports groups.
Okay, Jen?
Um, excuse me, I think specifically.
Um, excuse me, I think specifically, what, what I would comment is even if the first three years had a lower annual payment, there, as you said, council member, or sorry, Vice Mayor Ghani, um, sorry. As, as you said, it's, there, there's a lot of uncertainty. And so, even if we were to say like minimum amount due is X, I think that that even creates some caution for, for, for the, for the sports group. So, because, so what's new this year in the master fee schedule is that they are paying for their facility room usage. They did not pay for that usage previously. Also, what's new is each player has a ten dollar fee in addition to their registration fee. So, and that money would go specifically into the foundation for synthetic turf. So, because their organizations are looking at some additional fees just through the process of using the field, using the facilities, they're, they're, they're not quite sure, it just adds more variables. They're not quite sure how it's all gonna shake out. So, but I, I could certainly go back to them and, and discuss further, but they are, I, I, I really wanna reiterate and make sure that, that everybody knows the sports groups are very happy to contribute. I mean, they've already contributed, right, like a million dollars already. So, um, so sort of the zero to twenty thousand for AYSO is like absolute worst case scenario and best case scenario.
Sure. Yeah, and I think that makes a lot of, makes a lot of sense. And, and my purpose of doing this is not to make things tougher for them during a difficult time, but to enable them and for us to plan better for the funds. The way the agreements are written right now, there's a tremendous amount of flexibility. And so, like, for example, the one that I gave, if AYSO just, you know, pitched in five thousand a year for nine years, that'd be forty five thousand, and then they'd have a balloon payment in the tenth year, which would be very difficult for them. They hadn't planned for it ahead of time. So, it's strictly for that purpose only. I'm a big believer in, in sports programs. I played them growing up here in Foster City. They contributed significantly to my life. And so, I definitely do everything I can to partner with them. And that was just, that was a comment from the standpoint of just making things a little bit more transparent for them and for us. That was it. And if that means that we have a lower amount, much lower amount, even in the first three years to help them out, that's fine, you know. But so long as they know what, what the agreement looks like throughout the term without just a maximum payout, but kind of what their plan can look like, it may help them from a budgeting perspective.
But I, I, I think if they're okay with the plan the way it is, then maybe it's okay, Jen, I understand they're, they're fine with this?
Yeah, yeah, that, that was.
They've agreed, they've agreed to the terms in, in, as they're drawn up.
Okay. Councilmember Fruman, did you have a comment?
Yes, it's just a, a quick couple of comments. One is, and I haven't scrolled through all of them, but it looks like of the groups that we're talking about here, AYSO has already put up two hundred thousand of the three hundred and fifty thousand. So, they have, I guess the way I would look at it, they've already front loaded the payments. I do understand what, what Vice Mayor Ghani's saying is that at least they'll know that they have a benchmark to hit. We know what to expect each year would be cool as well. The, the other question, the only question I would have is, these payments are for work that we've already done? Or is it for work that we're going to do?
Work that's already been completed. It was the S one, S two, B one project.
So, the money, the money, the ci- the city has already expended the funds. It's not, and we already know that. So, it's not, it's not putting us out anymore than, than it would otherwise. I can live with this. I could also support the idea that we could approve this. And if you went back and renegotiated at a lower amount each year and a balloon payment, it still fits within that agreement. Because it says up to, it would just clarify it. So, I, I think that that's still, that opportunity would still exist.
I think if, if you just negotiate the, the minimums, you know, looking at yours even four through ten, just helps them out. That's all. You don't want them to be in a situation where they just made, you know, minimum payments and then maybe have a change on the board or something like that and find out that a big bill coming up. That's all.
It sounds like the agreement kind of, the agreement takes that into consideration. And if they're okay with that, then I, I don't see any problem with the agreement the way it's written.
I didn't, I didn't read it that way, but I'm perfectly fine if that's how the council feels. It's not, that's fine. I just wanted to share, share my opinion on it.
Thank you. Any other comments on that one? If not, I'm looking for a motion. Yes, Councilmember Fruman.
Madam Mayor, first, I'd, I'd just like to thank our youth sports groups for participating as, as part of the solution. It's very easy to step up and say, things could be better and sit back and wait for the city to pay. Our sports groups don't do that and, and I really appreciate that. So, with that, I'd be honored to offer a, a motion to accept a resolution of the city, of the city council, the city of Foster City, authorizing the city manager to sign agreements with and collect funds over the next ten years from local sports groups, which shall be deposited into the capital improvement fund to reimburse the cost for synthetic turf field conversion, project CIP three oh one six five nine at Sea Cloud Park.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Ghani?
Yes.
Hindi?
Yeah.
Awasthi?
Yes.
Fruman?
Yes.
Mayor Mahonpour?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero with all council members voting yes.
Thank you. So, the next one is six point two point two. And Vice Mayor Ghani is going to recuse himself on this one?
Madam, Madam Mayor, might I recommend that we go to six point two point three while he's here? And then, so we're not going back and forth?
If you'd like, that's fine with me. Sure. Let's go to six point two point three.
All right, thank you, Mayor Mahonpour. Just a quick question here, city manager. Just for the sake of transparency, could you please confirm that the permit technician will not work on any Gilead permits to avoid any conflict of interest?
So, that, that's my understanding, but I, I just wanna confirm that with our community development director. So, Marlene, can you confirm that?
Um, that is correct. The permit tech would be doing pretty much the, all the functions that a permit tech would include. That, that might include occasional processing of Gilead permits, but they're not dedicated for that. Uh, it's, it's really more of a paperwork processing they do at their end. So, yeah, hope that answered your question.
Councilmember Fruman has a question.
Yeah, I guess I wasn't clear. Councilmember Ghani, Vice Mayor Ghani is bringing this up probably for a reason. Is there a connection between Gilead and this vendor?
Uh, no, there isn't a connection between Gilead and the vendor.
So, there wouldn't be any conflict of interest. I, I guess I, I'm interested in hearing more about what he perceives as the, the conflict might be.
Well, my interpretation was of the staff report was that Gilead was paying.
That's right.
That's right.
That's right. I get it. Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
That, that payment is coming to the city and then being funded back out, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
But it's for that resource.
Right.
Thank you. Any other comments on this one? If not, I'm looking for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Ghani?
Yes.
Hindi?
Yeah.
Awasthi?
Yes.
Fruman?
Yes.
Mahonpour?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero with all council members voting yes.
Thank you. Uh, now we go to six point two point two. And we will, Rob, are we putting him in a room or?
Yes, we can, we can put him on hold.
Okay. Okay, I think he's on hold. So, um, do I have any comments on this one or questions? If not, I'm looking for a motion.
A move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Uh, Councilmember Hindi?
Yeah.
Awasthi?
Yes.
Fruman?
Yes.
Mayor Mahonpour?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero with council members Hindi, Awasthi, Fruman, and Mahonpour voting yes and Vice Mayor Ghani recusing himself.
Thank you. Can we get him back now?
Are you coming back here a second?
Okay. And you're back. Okay, so next item, please.
Item seven, public hearings. Seven point one, a public hearing to hear and consider public comments regarding proposed text amendments to chapter seventeen point seven eight, accessory dwelling units and relevant sections of title seventeen zoning of the Foster City municipal code to ensure compliance with recent state mandated legislative changes related to accessory dwelling units. Anyone who wants to provide public comment, please raise your hand during this time and we'll call on you after the staff report is presented.
Thank you. So, I opened the public hearing. Staff report, please. I see the presentation, but I can't hear anything.
Is Sophia providing?
Sophia, you're, you're on mute.
Did we lose Sophia?
Okay, no, she's, she's here.
Can everyone hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Okay, give me one second. I'm just gonna share my screen, please. Can everyone see my screen now?
Yes.
Can see it.
Good evening, Mayor, the members of city council and members of the public. Uh, the purpose of this item in front of you all is to review proposed text amendments to accessory dwelling units ordinance. Uh, since there is a lot of information that needs to be covered, I'll start with just an overview of state laws because of which this item is in front of you all. Uh, then I'll briefly present a comparison of the city's current ADU ordinance and state laws. After this, just briefly, the two planning commission meetings that we had, one was the study session on June eighteenth, and the next one was a, a public hearing at a regular meeting on July sixteenth. Um, most of, you know, the analysis and statements will be covered in the analysis. And in the end, we would just talk about the next steps for the adoption of these text amendments. So, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, there's a lot to cover. So, either if I'm going too slow or too fast, please do interrupt and let me know. So, in September twenty nineteen, the state legislature passed several new bills pertaining to ADUs and junior ADUs. ADUs as the more, I think more commonly known as granny units, in-law units, or second unit. Uh, they provide the complete independent living facilities in addition to the main house. So, as we discussed, these new state bills were introduced. Uh, these are SB thirteen, AB sixty eight, AB five eighty seven, AB six seventy, AB six seventy one, and AB eight eighty one. The main purpose of these bills were to ease the local zoning controls and streamline the permitting process in approving these ADUs. Uh, these bills have limited the ability of local agencies to regulate various zoning regulations such as size, quantity, setbacks, parking, and permitting processing for ADUs. These bills became effective in, on January one, twenty twenty this year. And the city's current ordinance no longer complies with current state laws. As a result, all ADU reviews that we undertake at present and approval practices do work to state law criteria, which is less stringent. Uh, just to give you main highlights of these bills, state law now provides for creation of ADUs in multifamily dwellings. It, it also mandates that the dwelling standards for ADUs cannot include minimum lot size. Uh, state law provides that local agencies must allow at, at least a minimum eight hundred square feet as of right ADU as long as it provides four feet rear and side setbacks. Uh, other provisions were regarding the approval process. Local agencies now must ministerially approve. There cannot be any discretionary approval. And all the approvals must be done within sixty days of a completed application submitted. Uh, local agencies also now must allow junior ADUs in single-family homes. Uh, also, the state laws now limits the abilities of HOAs to prohibit the ADUs or JADUs in single-family dwellings. Uh, the next few slides, I'm basically gonna present the analysis of the current ADU ordinance with regard to the state law changes. Uh, in the next few slides, you'll, you'll basically see that on left, if there's gonna be the graphics related to current ADU ordinance. And on the right, I have included graphics related to the state law changes. So, at present, the city's ADU ordinance only includes a detached, attached, and conversion ADUs in single-family homes. Uh, it, we do not have any provision to include JADUs. Uh, as discussed, the state law now mandates that local agencies must allow JADUs. JADUs are basically, you know, a part of the home is converted into a JADU and it cannot exceed five hundred square feet. It, a JADU includes an efficiency kitchen. It may or may not include separate sanitation facilities. Uh, as I discussed earlier, that state law now mandates that multifamily homes shall be allowed to include ADUs. State law includes conversion ADUs and detached ADUs. Uh, although property owners cannot add or, you know, expand their existing unit, they have the ability now to convert the non-livable spaces such as storage rooms, boiler rooms, passageways, et cetera, into ADUs. Uh, the next is the size of ADUs. Um, our current ADU ordinance limits the maximum size of ADUs to six hundred forty square feet. Uh, this is for all types of ADUs, attached, detached, or conversion. This might be a little confusing, but I hope I can present it in a simpler way. Uh, state law now mandates that local agencies must approve at minimum eight hundred square foot, which is as of right ADUs. Uh, detached ADUs shall be limited to twelve hundred square feet. And attached ADUs cannot exceed more than fifty percent of the size of the main house. However, uh, local agencies do have the ability to impose maximum size provided it is not less than eight hundred fifty square feet for studio and one bedroom and one thousand square foot for two or more bedrooms. Uh, regarding number of ADUs, uh, uh, our current ordinance only allows one ADU per single-family lot. However, uh, as per the new state laws, a single-family home can have both a JADU and a detached ADU, technically allowing three units on a lot allowed for a single-family home. In multifamilies, again, a, a home, uh, the state law provides conversion ADUs up to twenty-five percent of number of units, but at least one, and up to two detached ADUs. Uh, say, for example, if there's a duplex or triplex, now that lot can have one conversion ADU and the two detached ADUs in addition to the duplex or triplex. Uh, next major change is regarding the setbacks. Some, our current ADU ordinance, all the setbacks, the ADUs must provide setbacks that of the main house, which is basically five feet side setback and twenty feet rear setbacks. However, now. However, uh now state law uh basically asks that all the ADUs uh shall provide uh side and rear setbacks of uh minimum four feet. Uh, and uh other changes are regarding uh um uh zoning regulations related to minimum lot size. Our current ADU ordinance, um uh the minimum lot size requirement is five five, five thousand square feet and uh now the state law uh basically provides that there shall be no uh minimum lot size requirement when uh approving ADUs. Uh, our current uh ADU ordinance requires that uh all the ADUs count towards the lot coverage uh requirement. Uh, whereas the the state law basically uh says that one cannot, uh local agencies uh cannot impose the lot coverage uh such as uh SAR, open space, that would uh preclude uh the construction of an eight hundred square foot ADU. Regarding height, our current ADU ordinance uh basically falls to the underlying zoning district regulation, which is uh in R one and R two zoning district is maximum twenty-five feet. Uh, state law now mandates that ADU must be at least sixteen feet in height, uh but there is no uh maximum height provision for ADUs. Uh, another sweeping uh uh there are more sweeping changes regarding the permitting process. Uh, our current ADU uh ordinance basically requires that any exterior changes to single-family homes um must go through an architectural review. Uh, however, state law now says that while approving ADUs, there cannot be any discretionary approval and all the approvals shall be made within sixty days of a deemed to application. In addition, uh state law also requires that local jurisdictions, uh local jurisdictions cannot require correction of non-conforming zoning condition as a condition to approve uh an ADU or JADU. Uh, also, um state law now mandates that there shall be no owner occupancy rules for all ADUs permitted uh from now until January one twenty twenty-five. So uh these uh changes were presented to planning commission uh first in a study session on June eighteenth, where the staff uh presented the three policy con- considerations uh to obtain feedback uh from planning commission. Uh, the first wa- uh the first policy consideration was regarding the size of ADUs. Uh, at the meeting, uh planning commission uh provided the feedback that the maximum size of ADUs uh shall be twelve hundred square feet or fifty percent of the size of the main house, whichever is less. The second policy consideration was regarding the height of the ADUs. Uh, planning commission provided the feedback that ADUs can go over sixteen feet in height as long as they do not exceed a maximum height requirement of the underlying zoning district or uh the height of uh the main house. The third policy consideration that staff presented was regarding providing a courtesy neighbor uh notifications uh regarding a new ADU. Even though there is no recourse uh for a neighbor who is opposed to an ADU, staff felt uh that um it it might be beneficial uh to provide uh courtesy neighbor notification and the planning commission agreed to the same. So, uh staff took the feedback uh provided at the study session and other issues raised uh at the meeting and drafted text amendments to ADU ordinance. Uh, however, keeping in mind that Foster City is a planned development and also keeping in mind that these are state-mandated changes and we don't have much discretion uh over these changes, staff uh did provide that um in single-family homes, the maximum size of ADUs be limited to twelve hundred square feet or fifty percent of the house, uh of the size of the main house. But in multifamily uh dwellings, the size of the ADUs uh shall be limited to eight hundred fifty square feet for studios uh or one bedroom and one thousand square feet for two or more bedrooms. Uh, in addition, uh a a Dcat ADUs shall be limited to sixteen feet in height. Uh, one provision that staff uh did include uh was regarding uh uh that all ADUs uh over eight hundred square feet shall be subject to uh uh local zoning regulations such as lot coverage, uh open space, uh and so on. Uh, as we discussed, most of these uh changes are mendis- uh mandated. Uh, staff also drafted uh objective dine, uh design standards uh for ADUs over eight hundred square feet. However, uh uh at the the planning commission felt that they wanted to discuss uh these object, objective design standards in detail and um at the meeting, uh planning commission recommended on a vote four to one that ADU ordinance may be forwarded to city council without objective design standards. These uh standards would be be, would be presented to uh planning commission for their review at a future date uh and then would be presented to council uh as part of uh text amendment. Uh, the revised uh amendment as presented and uh attached as attachment one in your packet would update ADU ordinance for compliance with state laws. Uh, however, I do have one uh minor connect correction uh in the ordinance and it's on page uh six, uh page six. Um, this basically says, uh this is for section seventeen dot seven eight dot zero six zero D three A. Uh, it shall read that side and rear setbacks shall be no less than four feet. Uh, in the end, staff recommends that city council introduce and pass to second reading proposed text amendments to chapter seventeen dot six sixteen, uh chapter seventeen dot eighteen and chapter seventeen dot seventy-eight uh of title seventeen zoning with uh this minor provision. Uh, the next step would be to consider these amendments at a second reading, following which the revised ordinance would be in effect thirty days from the second reading. Uh, revised ordinance is required uh to be submitted to state department within sixty days ad- of adoption. Uh, just briefly, in the end, I just want to include uh that this has been a very challenging exercise for the staff, including myself, Marlene and Kai, to include these uh state-mandated changes to ADU ordinance. Uh, with that, I uh conclude my presentation and staff is happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
You're muted.
Sorry, that was a long presentation.
Wait, do we have any public comments?
We do not have any raised hands.
No raised hands. If I don't see any raised hands, then I will close the public hearing. And uh let's have com- comments from the council. I saw Councilmember Wasti saying this.
Thank you, Mayor. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
It's a great presentation, Sophia. Thank you.
Thank you.
I I really like the current and the new comparison spelled out so clearly. Thank you. Um, just to confirm a couple of things, um based on what you have shared, and this is for public as well, do we have any option to go more conservative on these laws, uh these requirements from state?
Uh, I would say that whenever we did, uh all these are state-mandated changes and the only discretion that we had was regarding applying uh a little bit more zoning regulations to ADUs over eight hundred square feet. Uh, so state law now mandates that uh uh local agencies must allow an ADU uh of eight hundred square feet size as of right. So we don't have any discretion, but over that, we uh we did include in our uh ordinance that zoning regulations such as the lot coverage, open space requirement uh shall be applicable.
Okay. So that allowed us to be, um is it fair to say, to be a little bit more restrictive? Um, because we are putting in conditions, um like a little bit um more than what state is requiring. I mean, are we, are are we encouraging um beyond what state is requiring or are we staying conservative? Um, are 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 we on the other side?
So, Richa, so, Richa, uh I I can answer that question. Um, we are um i- in terms of the size and maybe Sophia, you can put the the PowerPoint back on, the one that talks about the size. Uh, we are allowing more than the minimum uh state requirement as far as the size in a single-family home. But what, the way we are regulating it is that if it does exceed the minimum size, it would be subject to the city's zoning ordinance as far as lot coverage, setbacks, and other things.
Okay.
Uh, so, uh, this uh this uh slide that I have right here, uh so there were a couple of overlapping bills when it came to the size of ADUs. So, uh state law basically says that we have to allow at minimum eight hundred square foot of ADU. Uh, I, you know, irrespective of any zoning regulations. Uh, then there was a provision regarding the size of D-type ADUs and attached ADUs. However, uh cities do have a discretion where they can impose the size, uh um but it cannot be less than eight hundred fifty square feet for studio and one bedroom and it cannot be less than one thousand square foot for two or more bedrooms. So we did include twelve hundred square feet maximum for a single-family dwelling, but for multifamily, we went with the more conservative, which is eight hundred fifth, uh eight hundred fifty square foot studio and one bedroom and one thousand square foot for two or more bedrooms.
Okay, yeah, that answered my question. Thank you. So, um, uh i- it's safe to conclude that we are within what is allowable based on state laws. We are trying to stay conservative. And this should have been my first question, actually, you know, either you or Marlene. If you can help um sort of share some background and context on why state is coming up with these laws? Um, it may be very obvious to all of us, but for the benefit of the community, um, is is there any context that you can share? Why has state come up with um these these laws in the first place? How does that help? Yeah, go ahead.
Sure, Richa, uh I I think that that's a, that's a really good um question you you raised uh for the knowledge of the public. I mean, essentially, um a- as we all know, the state has uh declared that we are in this housing crisis, right? And the and the main um issue is what they call the missing middle, um housing, um for the mi- missing middle income, right? And so ADUs is a way of state trying to close that gap. Uh, as as we know, ADUs do fall under the affordable housing category, so for the purposes of arena reporting, they do ca- get counted as affordable housing. And um given, given that this is probably the the most practical way to increase housing supply, um, that is one of the reasons why the state has taken a little more of an um aggressive approach uh to some of these new laws um that that's before you today.
Thank you. So it's great to know that these come toward Rena requirements, so that's great information. Uh, my next question is uh around HOA rules. Um, how do these rules and ordinance that we'll come up with, how how does that work with HOA rules? As we know, seventy percent of Foster City has H uh HOAs, so.
I'll defer that question to Kai.
Well, uh, thank you, Marlene. Um, I'll just say that there are it's, the laws that were passed last year have made it much easier for people who live in HOAs to um get around, you know, CCNRs or uh restrictions that would would not allow an ADU prior to this year. Um, the the city's position on that in terms of the ordinance is really that um those um those parts of the law are really focused on the private relationship between the HOA and and the the property owner. And so the city is trying to stay out of those those discussions to the extent possible. Uh, but in the ordinance, it does say that if um if HOA um authorization is required, the city will make sure that that authorization's been given prior to to issuing any permit.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Awasthi, if I may add, also one thing is that these HOA limitations applies to a homes with the which are single-family, so they are not for multifamily.
Okay. Can you, can you clarify that a little? So the there, the townhomes can have HOAs too, so you're saying the HOA rules, the ordinance would trump the HOA rules for townhomes and not for single-family homes? Did I understand that correctly? Sorry, a little confused on that one.
Uh, sorry, can you repeat that? Uh, I was just wanting to say that the the bill regarding the uh which which is basically limiting the ability of HOAs to uh, you know, uh obstruct ADUs uh is more for single-family dwellings. So I, uh Kai, uh can you speak to that if the townhomes in our uh current uh ordinance uh is considered single-family homes?
You know, I don't, I don't necessarily know the answer to that. I believe the answer is no. Um, but I think more often than not, what we're gonna run into with um HOAs is that oftentimes the space that would other, that would be used for uh developing an ADU is actually owned by the HOA. Um, and so that's um in many cases, if an ADU is gonna go on HOA-owned property, it's gonna be the HOA that's the applicant rather than the individual property owner.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you. Yeah. Um, and um I I think, Sophia, you went over this. What is the effective date if um of implementation of this ordinance?
So, uh, you know, these state laws have been in effect since uh January one twenty twenty. So our ordinance uh up to today, if it goes to second reading, our revised ordinance would be in effect thirty days from the second reading.
So basically, Richa, since the state law went into effect earlier this year, whatever, um i- if say we received an application, which we did, it would have just defaulted to the state laws that went into effect January first twenty twenty.
Got it. And do you guys foresee any um issues or anything that would impact the quality of life, the infrastructure needs, et cetera? As a result of this, um if the uh if based on this ordinance, all of a sudden, we are seeing too many requests for ADUs? Have we thought about that? Have we done an analysis of that? It's kind of the flip side of um what we were, we are talking about.
We have not uh done a a analysis of that nature. Um, but however, as part of the building permit review for each of these applications, we do look at water, sewer, uh fire sprinklers, and and just generally, uh even geotechnical reports for that matter. Um, that that's really our only um mechanism right now to make sure the the new house or the new unit, um we have the infrastructures to support that. Uh, to do a a more of a city-wide type of analysis could be a little challenging because we have not seen a huge influx of ADU applications and that number is still an unknown at this point.
Thank you.
Councilmember Awasthi, if, could I just add to that real quickly? Um, let me just say that I I think sort of what this, what this legislation or these bills collectively are saying is that the state has prioritized housing over almost everything else. Uh, and so they've left open the possibility that um you could reject an application if it posed an actual health and safety threat, uh but that things like parking, um things like traffic uh are are pushed behind the need for housing and that's sort of what's uh recognized in in this legislation that that was passed.
Thanks, Kai. Those are all the questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Hindi, I saw your hand.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Let me start first of all by thanking staff for this uh report uh and also the planning commission for their due diligence and the work that they have recommended to us. And I know it took a lot of time and and an effort coming back a couple times. And I know it took a lot of time and and an effort coming back a couple times at least uh on this very complicated issue. Uh so let me ask this hypothetical question, not that I'm advocating for it, but uh just so we all are clear. Probably my question would be to Kai. So this is a state mandate. Uh what happens if the city refuses to follow the state law on the state mandate?
Uh well, that's a great question, uh Councilmember Hindi. Uh I think probably the ultimate um the ultimate response is the city would probably get sued. Um and it may be that an applicant would say to the city, you've you've missed my sixty days. Uh I'm going to co- I'm going to court not to to sue you on your ordinance, but to get uh the court to say that I can construct what I've proposed to construct with or without your permit because you're 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 past the reasonable time to handle my permit application.
So in essence, basically what you're saying, we have to follow the law or suffer the consequences of being violating the law.
That is correct, yes.
As 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 a member of the state.
That is correct, yes.
Okay, well, thank you for that. Uh the other question that I have for staff, uh and I know it is in a report. So these units, if they are affordable, they will count towards our arena numbers. Is that correct, Marlene or Sophia?
That is correct.
Yeah.
Do we do we have or have you thought about any strategies of how to encourage these units to be rented at affordable units uh so we could address our arena numbers that are at a very low income? Uh is there any strategies, other cities that you have seen or you have any ideas as how we could take and use this opportunity, if you will, rather than constructing new developments? Utilize these ADUs or these units to count towards our arena for low income. How?
So uh Councilmember Hindi, uh to answer your question, i- if you're referring to to the rents that make them affordable, then that's beyond the city's control. That's between um two two private entities, right? Uh however, uh as to my knowledge, um there are a few cities uh independents that I want to say that have done some active um promotion or um outreach related to ADUs because they do want to spur the production of ADUs. For example, Redwood City has incentives um to promote ADUs. And again, I also like towns like Hillsborough, the the way they meet their arena numbers is primarily through ADUs. So there are some cities that do some active um, you know, promotion, offering incentives, uh street lining, uh development review. But um that that's a that's that's by knowledge, um that's what we could we could do if that's something the council is interested in.
Well, thank you for that uh answer. No, clearly, I I understand that it is a transaction between the landlord and the tenant. But my question really was specific to, is there any strategies that has been implemented by other cities to where encourage the landlord to have those units rented at below market rate? That's um what I'm referring to.
Yeah, I I'm not aware of any um any strategy along those lines because by default, an ADU just counts towards uh affordable housing. Um but I have heard of like things like uh what Redwood City has done in terms of promoting ADUs.
Okay, so did you, I'm sorry, did you say all the ADUs will count towards affordable house?
Yes, yes.
And 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 what and what class would that be? The the low, extremely low, or what?
I believe it's low. Um Sophia, do you do you know off the top of your head?
No, not really. Uh the only thing, Marlene, I may want to add is that some of these bills that do talk about uh local agencies, so when they update their housing elements uh to include a plan that incentivizes and promotes the creation of these ADUs that can offer affordable rents uh for very low, low or moderate income house land uh households. And uh after that, the HCD will develop a list of state grants and financial incent- incentives for the same. So as you know, we we are uh we're gonna start our process of housing element update. At that time, we can look into something like this.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And I that I think that's something that we definitely need to look at moving forward. Explore those opportunities and what strategies we need to implement to to do so. Um the other question that I have, it kind of relates to the current and unpermitted ADUs. Uh what do we do about those and how do we get those up to code, if you will? Or how do we get those to be permitted? And do you have any ideas or what what would trigger us to get into some of these units and say, oh, you're not in compliance. You need to bring this ADU up to compliance?
Uh so uh state law now mandates that if there are any unpermitted ADUs or JADUs, um the applicant can request a five-year delay in enforcement. Uh that uh delay in enforcement will be basically to bring up uh bring that ADU or JADU up to the uh health and safety uh fire safety standards. So yes, they can, uh and that is one of the things that I did include, that they can request a five-year enforcement delay. And this has to be made, uh uh they have to request it to the building official.
Okay, so that basically will be initiated by the property owner.
Applicant.
At the applicant, but there is nothing like for the city. So say, for example, somebody is changing a roof at their house and we have the inspector walk in and the inspector discovers an ADU that is not permitted. How would that be treated?
So maybe I can answer that. Oh, yeah, that's true. So maybe I can take that. So Sophia's right that basically the state has offered everybody who potentially has an illegal ADU uh sort of a five-year safe harbor to get into compliance and not get sort of the slap on the wrist that you might otherwise get if you got caught. Uh so proactively come in, put in an application, even though it's an existing structure, put in an application as if you're building it new, bring it up to compliance with with building code, current building code, uh and you'll be good to go. So if somebody, if we had an inspector that went on to look at a roof, uh for example, and found an ADU that was not permitted, um I believe under this law, that means that for the next five years, we can't go after uh that person who has the illegal ADU. But we now know that they have the illegal ADU. So my guess would be the best way to handle that then would be for the inspector to say, hey, look, we know you have this illegal ADU, you have this great opportunity to bring it into compliance now, do it easily. Uh let's get it handled uh and then hopefully the the uh the resident is is receptive to that.
Okay, well, thank you for that answer. Can you verify that information, Kai? Or are you are you are you certain that uh a unpermitted ADU is not voluntarily came in for the city to be permitted? And we discovered that on our own that still get that safe harbor period?
Yeah, so it delays enforcement. So there's there's a nuance to that. Now, if the ADU is um a sa- a health and safety threat, that's another issue, right? Um if they have a safe structure there that they've just done without getting, for example, maybe they pulled the permit, they never get it finalized. Um now they have a now they have an an unpermitted ADU, but it's otherwise a safe structure. That's what we're talking about here. If it's a if it's a health hazard, uh if it's outside of the uh what would be allowed under the ordinance, that's another issue.
Thank you. Well, thank Madam Mayor. I'll yield for now. I'll come back if I need to have any more questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ghani.
Thank you, Mayor Maum, for uh I want to thank uh Marlene, Sophia, Kai. Um I I had a chance to watch the uh the planning committee meetings and I appreciate the professionalism and thoroughness of your reports there as well as what you've presented to us here. Um yeah, I I prepared some comments, but I gotta tell you, I'm pretty frustrated uh on on a few levels. Um first of all, uh this is the first reading for something that can impact our single-family residences, um our quality of life, and we don't have a single public comment. I didn't hear many public comments at the Planning Commission. This has to be a note to us as council, as staff. We had to do a better job of raising awareness about these things. We need to have more comment. We need to have more outreach. We need to have more collaboration with the community. We need to hear from them. Uh how many applications did we receive this year for ADUs? Two?
Uh I would say three to four so far.
Okay, and 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 that might pick up as the as things of uh past year. But we know that there are some serious challenges with uh putting up an ADU and uh and there are a lot of people that sometimes pull permits but don't really go through the entire process as well. But uh I think Kai, if I understood you correctly, said housing, you know, and this is my interpretation of what you said, so correct me if I'm wrong. Housing production trumps quality of life, whether it's traffic, whether it's our schools. At this point, what the states come down and said is housing production trumps it all.
That seems to be what the state's priority is, yes, uh with Councilmember Ghani.
Thank you. Thank you for confirming that. Um let me get on to some other points. I want to make sure I understand these correctly before I share a little bit more of my frustration. Uh junior ADUs are now permitted in single-family homes. Is that correct? Sophia?
Yes.
Okay, and state law now provides a property owner the right to construct an ADU up to eight hundred square feet in size and sixteen feet in height with four feet of side and rear setbacks from the property line. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, what's the current setback requirement uh at the from the rear? Is it twenty feet?
Yes, twenty feet rear and five feet side setback.
Okay, all right. Uh so we're taking about eighty percent of that away on the rear.
But also, just to uh add, Councilmember Ghani, what the twenty feet setback from the rear is typically for an attached uh structure to the single-family homes. A detached uh structure or an accessory structure right now could have lesser setback. At the minimum, though, it has to be five feet from the side and the rear.
I got it. Okay, okay. Thank you. So this this could be an attached structure that has a uh four feet, four-foot setback now. Is that correct? Or is that just for the attached ADUs?
Yeah.
Okay, so we took about eighty percent of the setback away for an attached uh unit now. Okay. Uh the total floor area of attached ADUs cannot exceed fifty percent of the main house and detached ADUs cannot exceed twelve hundred square feet. However, a local agency can provide a maximum building size uh provided it is not less than eight hundred and fifty square feet for a one-bedroom or studio and one thousand square feet for a two-bedroom or larger ADU on a single-family lot. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, that's the case. I'm deeply concerned about the state taking control and mandating requirements on our planned community. We need to have a path of communication back to the state legislature, especially for Foster City, who's been a good actor with regards to development. Taking our control away seems like a direct threat to our democracy. I'm sitting here in front of you today, you're elected official, and I have no say regarding ADUs up to eight hundred square feet. There's nothing I can do. That's frustrating. And given the sweeping changes to ADU regulations mandated by the state legislature, local jurisdictions are left with very limited control. Changes proposed by staff regarding objective design standards give us as much control as possible for ADUs over eight hundred square feet only. Sophia, is that correct?
Sorry, uh can you say that again?
Changes proposed by staff regarding objective design standards give us as much control as possible for ADUs over eight hundred square feet only. At eight hundred, no control.
That's right. Yes, eight hundred square feet is as a fright.
Thank you. I humbly request staff in the Planning Commission, you know, to come back with recommendations for objective design standards for ADUs above eight hundred square feet. I appreciate Vice Chair Wykoff's comments at the July sixteenth Planning Commission meeting stating he didn't want to just dump this in council's lap. Again, extremely frustrating, extremely frustrating.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ghani, uh to your point about uh outreach, uh I'm sure we we will look into ways of um reaching out to the community. But I do want to point out that since the new state laws do affect HOAs, we did notify them specifically through our listener for both the Planning Commission study session, regular meeting as well as uh this council meeting. We we sent out an email to all the HOAs. Um unfortunately, we we did not get any comments, so.
No, Marlene, I appreciate that and uh and you and you know me very well. Um no- nothing of what I I'm sitting on the same side of the table as you, right? Uh nothing about my emotions tonight or my frustration tonight is directed at you uh or staff. But I am frustrated. I am disappointed. Um and and I think, you know, I'm a little bit disappointed that the community isn't picking up on this and coming to us and talking to us about it either way, but talking to us about it publicly. Um but I also think that beyond what we have done, we may want to revisit how we're raising awareness in this community, knowledge and adoption. Not just awareness, but knowledge and adoption of a position based on facts and how we go about doing that when it comes to housing.
And and Vice Mayor, just just uh on that point, as you know, we're having a joint uh Planning Commission and City Council meeting um that will be geared towards discussing housing and housing issues. So you make a very good point. Um we can also talk about and discuss strategies during that meeting as well.
Well, and thank you, City Manager, for that. And I I don't think anybody here is shying away from the difficult conversation or the intelligent conversation about how we move forward, right? Um and I and I appreciate the efforts that have been put forth by staff, put forth by yourself in the middle of a pandemic to keep us keep this as a priority. And uh like I said, you know, I I would have liked to have seen twenty, thirty people, fifty people on this call with us telling us what they think either way, you know? So that's all. But I I'm on the same team as you always. You know that. All right. Those are my comments. Thank you for your time.
Uh Councilmember Fruman.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh Vice Mayor Ghani, I think part of the issue could be the fact that the the citizens and residents of Foster City share our frustration and recognize the fact that very little of this is within our control and coming to us and telling us that they don't support this. Um it it lets us know that they're engaged, but it doesn't change anything for them, unfortunately. And uh that's really, this is really an area where I I truly believe we need a a greater voice in Sacramento. Uh we need a a lobbyist of some sort, whether it's simply ours or with an eight with other cities of similar size and similar issue to let them know that these cookie cutter ideas don't fit every single community. It's just not right. I agree with you. Um a couple of things I wanted to hit on, uh Councilmember Hindi had some very good points about affordable housing. And I wanted to note a couple of things on that. First is uh he wanted to talk about ways that we could incentivize using these ADUs as truly affordable housing. And I think there might be a way, in the sense that the state has given us minimum requirements, and we can go a little bit above that. If we accept a minimum size and allow sizes larger than that, if they are willing to to make them affordable units, we can give them a bigger size if they're willing to meet affordable housing requirements for um low and very low income. That might incentivize um them to do a little bit bigger ones or incentivize them to do affordable. That's number one. Number two is on the unpermitted uh ADUs that are out there. Um I'm torn a little bit because I I haven't had an opportunity to discuss with the council about Rena. And my understanding of it is that we have a requirement to identify, not build, these housing units. So I'm not a hundred percent certain if there's some incentive to us to get those unpermitted units permitted. Is there something that we can count them for that's some value to us, that's worth it for us to to make some incentive, you know, like it's a big version of a library book that's overdue and not charging the fine? You know, is there something we can do to incentivize that? So those are a couple of things that came up that I wanted to comment on, and I I needed to clarify and understand a couple of other things. Um the height requirement, they must be at least sixteen feet. They can't be less than sixteen feet. They're not allowed to come in with a plan that has a a height that's less than sixteen feet? That seems kind of odd.
Uh no, that's no, sorry, that's 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 not accurate. It's 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 close. That's not accurate. What what it is is that um they have a right to build up to sixteen feet. We cannot restrict uh we cannot restrict it below sixteen.
So the eight hundred and the sixteen. So the eight hundred and the sixteen feet, if they're within those, then we don't have any any discussion.
The biggest take, yes, the biggest takeaway from this law is that everybody can have an A D U that's eight hundred square feet, sixteen feet high. Four foot setback in the back and on the side.
Alright, thank you. Um, and then the one thing that I caught tonight that I didn't catch before that I gives me some, a little bit of hope. Is that if anything that's over eight hundred square feet, we can, we can tell them that it needs to match similar to the. The main house and color and and materials and all those kinds of things that we normally would do on an addition, correct?
So that's, that's what we, that is what we would be taking to the Planning Commission as part of the objective design standards and that would be the intent. Uh, in adopting those objective design standards.
Alright, so anything under, they can build ones under eight hundred or up to eight hundred without any regulation, but once they hit eight oh one. Then we can employ these these standards presumably to make them blend well on the property.
Correct.
Okay. Um. A couple of ones that that I'm trying to figure out loopholes and and concerns, and one of them came up, we talked about. The minimum size required by the state for a two bedroom was a thousand, we had to allow it to a thousand, I think for a two bedroom. And we also had fifty percent. So if you have, and we have some in town, I believe, an eighteen hundred square foot home. Half of that is nine hundred and they want to build a two bedroom A D U. We're off by a hundred square feet. Do do, are we required then to revert to the state minimum of a two bedroom being a thousand? Or are we at whichever is less fifty percent, which is nine hundred?
So, Sophia, do you want to take that or do you mind if I?
Yes, please, go ahead, thank you, Ken.
So the way to think about this is that there's maximums and then there is what you get by right, right? So you can set, you can't set maximums any lower than eight fifty for one bedroom or or studio. And a thousand for two bedrooms or more, right? So the eight hundred square feet is what you get even if. Let me back up, so the city can impose its normal zoning uh design or um zoning requirements or zoning regulations on the A D U. Up to the point that it would preclude an eight hundred square foot A D U. Irrespective of the maximum that you set, so um. The thousand square foot for the two bedroom, in reality, if you have, if you have the right lot that has this, the right um. Um, sort of natural difficulties on it or it doesn't have a great amount of developable space. Um, you could end up with a two, you could end up with a a, an effective smaller maximum than the thousand square foot or the twelve hundred square foot. Uh, but it couldn't be any lower than eight hundred.
Okay. Um, on a, on a two, on a second story. Can, two different situations, one is expanding, if we have a sixteen foot limit. On these, if you wanted to expand a second floor. To add an A D U, clearly it's going to be over sixteen feet. Is that permitted because it's a second floor addition, even though it's outside the sixteen foot limit?
I believe what we said on that and uh Sophia, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe what we said on that is that. The height cannot exceed the existing height of the second story of the existing dwelling. Um, so it can't get any, can't get any taller than it already.
Okay, so if you're adding to an existing second floor, can't be any higher than the existing second floor. Now, if you have a single story home. And you want to add a second floor to make an A D U. Then Sophia shaking her head, does that mean you can't do that? Or because it's over the sixteen foot limit?
So the way we have worded is uh if uh we are saying that detached A D U's are limited to sixteen feet in height. Attached A D U's on a single story, if it's on a ground floor, then they're limited to uh sixteen feet. But attached uh A D U on second story.
Thank you.
Sorry, so the uh the attached A D U's on second story shall be limited to the uh, the height of the main house. So it it's kind of, uh, Kai, do you want to?
Yeah, I think in, I think in, I think in the instance that you're talking about, Councilmember Fruman, is that it would be subject to the normal height. Restriction for that that zone. So if they were gonna, for example, if they had a a in a garage and they wanted to build over the garage. Whatever the maximum buildable height is in that zone, they would have to keep it under that height.
Okay. Um. Oh, what um, what was the the staff's thinking regarding the difference between single family? And multifamily or the H O As, I think it was H O As, when when you put at the uh. Twelve hundred and when you put at the state minimums, why the difference?
Uh, so regarding the single family, uh, as we said, we had the discussion with Planning Commission and Planning Commission wanted to go with the higher, uh, you know. The maximum limit of twelve hundred square feet. Uh, so when we were evaluating uh the, you know, multifamily. Uh, staff recommended that we go with the little bit more conservative approach of providing eight hundred fifty square feet for studio or one bedroom. And one thousand square feet for two or more bedrooms.
And and do we?
And again, the, sorry.
Do we have any real true multifamily places in town that have enough room on their personal property? To add a unit of any size like that? And we're talking about apartments or townhouses and condos, right?
Yes, that's so, you know, uh, as I said, now state law mandates the conversion units in A D U's, so basically they they can convert, you know, non livable spaces. Like garages, uh, carports, uh, so they have the ability to convert those into A D U's.
Okay. I think that's all I had, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So I share Vice Mayor Ghani's frustration and I'm sure we all have, are a little bit frustrated with um. This state mandated um housing that they are requiring us to do. And I do have a few questions, um, one of them is a parking situation. So if somebody develops the garage into an A D U, there's no parking and there probably going to be three or four cars that are going to be on street parking. Right? Because they're not, there there's no parking, they're allowing that.
That's right, and no conversion, and even if they convert their garages, they they don't require that a parking to be replaced.
Isn't that because the driveway is considered a parking spot?
It is.
So, so but uh another concern I have is the waterfront properties. So right now it's a twenty foot setback on the waterfront properties. If you have four foot setback on waterfront, isn't it going to put more pressure on um the concrete? Keeping the water back?
Uh, yes, yes, um.
Do that.
Yes, there there would definitely be um the foundation load on the bulkhead if if that's what you're referring to. And again, that's something that we would evaluate as part of the building permit process.
So we can disallow something that close to the water?
If if it becomes a health and safety issue, I think Kai, that that's definitely something the city can um can have the homeowner. Either move the the A D U to the extent where it does not cause that issue uh or maybe cut down the size. I don't know, I I think if it's a health and safety issue, we we can do something about it.
Okay.
So uh, Martin, if I may add, the local agencies can preclude A D U's due to inadequate water or sewer or public safety impact. So if that is considered a public safety impact, then yeah.
Okay. So you could have a situation where you have a house that's already built uh with a big setback. But then the A D U is going to be closer. To the back of the lot. And we can't, we can't say anything about that.
That is correct.
It's correct.
Um. Yeah, I I'm so frustrated with the state telling us how to change our neighborhoods, I I, it really bothers me that. This could change the look and the feel of family neighborhoods and single family homes in in particular. And so that really bothers me and I'm really surprised that we don't have anybody, any public comments um. Uh, on this, I I don't know if it's because people just. Um, have recognized that we can't fight City Hall or what it is, but I really. I really think we do need some support in Sacramento helping us, um, I don't know if we can get together with some cities and see if we can. Can get a consultant lobbyist or or something, but I know I have spoken to personally to Senator Hill about the housing issue. And this one size fits all. Um, and and it just, we don't seem to have much power. Uh, they're looking at the housing crisis as as you build more housing to solve a problem that is multi dimensional and. And it's going to affect so many uh neighborhoods. Uh, that they're they're blinded and just want to create more housing, so so this this is very frustrating to me, um. So we have no say, up to eight hundred square feet, A D U unit. We have no say on objective standard design, objective de- design standards.
That is correct, yeah.
So we could have somebody put a shed out there as long as it meets code. And and we can't say anything about it, that it looks like crap.
That is correct.
Uh, is that a technical term?
That's a technical term. I just made it such. No, it, I mean, it affects the the neighbors and the neighbors, you can give a courtesy notice to the neighbors, but. What do you do with a courtesy notice, you can't do anything except you know it's there, which I support the courtesy notice, don't get me wrong. Um, I think it's, it's just the right thing to do. But I also think that that we should have a a say in what it's going to look like in the end. Um, I think it really, it's it starts to destroy neighborhoods the way that we know the neighborhoods here in Foster City. Um, uh, Vice Mayor Ghani, did you have a a comment?
Yeah, just wanted to, just wanted to piggyback off that Mayor Mahampur, sorry, it's a little bit challenging without the body language and sitting next to your guys, you know, so I I didn't mean to interrupt.
That's okay, go ahead.
Uh, Kai, you know, instead of like taking this approach as combative, like is there an opportunity? Uh, or have you heard of any cities that are, you know, working closely? With the state to highlight some of their concerns, such as us being a planned community, such as us being in the top five percent of meeting arena numbers across the state. And we're a good actor. You know, we're on an island. Uh, you know, we're we're not in a transit rich area. Um, you know, are, is there some analysis or some evaluation that can be done, some outreach that can be done to identify? What's the best path to providing feedback, this seems really one directional from the state. You know, and um, and obviously, you know, not, they're not taking a chisel to this, right? You know, they're not taking a surgical approach to solving this problem and. Um. You know, I, not trying to pick a fight, but I don't like getting beat up either. You know, so how do we, how do we find a way to, you know, or have you heard of any ways, like with other? Um, city attorneys or, you know, anybody else working on this, are there any other concerns that are coming out from the mid peninsula or? Anything else that we can kind of have?
I also, I also look at it as, it's not just us that need to lobby Sacramento, we need the residents out there saying what they think. We need the residents to call their senators, their assembly members and and say, this, this is not working for us. Um, I don't think we're getting that public support like that to to say, no, this is, we don't want this, you know, you can't do this to us. I I'm sorry, I kind of interrupted you.
No problem, um, well, briefly, I'll just say that I know the League of California Cities um was opposed to this bill. Um, or to the several bills, um, they did, they did put out opposition and and they voiced a lot of the concerns that. Uh, Vice Mayor Ghani, Mayor Mahampur, uh, Councilmember Fruman, uh. All just raised and that's, that's, this is a one size fits all approach in in enormous state with nuance and uh. Community uniqueness throughout, um, so there is a lot of frustration over it, um. You know, my read of it is that. The state is looking at a housing crisis and this was the low hanging fruit. Uh, and that things that were more um. Things like S S B fifty, which I'm sure the council is aware of that 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 did not pass. Um, uh, are difficult to do and this was easy for the state to do. Um, and so that's why we have this. Um, in terms of um trying to, I I I want to sort of spin this as positive as I can and be productive if I can. Uh, so getting back to uh what Mayor Mahampur uh brought up about waterfront properties, I I want to resurrect for a moment. A a brief conversation we had at the Planning Commission, which was. I think there is a way that you could uh potentially incentivize people to get away from the waterfront. Uh, and that would be uh to give them some incentive, may that, maybe that's more square footage. Uh, if they agree to move away from the waterfront. That did not, uh, that did not go over at the Planning Commission mainly because. Ultimately, the Planning Commission decided to set the maximums higher than what's required. Um, but if the councils has concerns about particular areas of town like the waterfront properties, I think that's, that's an avenue that could be explored a little bit further.
Yeah, I I'm I'm not, I I am not in favor of going over. Uh, the the twelve, like they wanted the twelve hundred, I would keep it at a thousand max size, single family home. Um, I I'm not in favor of going up to twelve hundred. So, uh, Councilmember Fruman?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, uh, process question, I know we're talking about ordinances and regulations, but. The the concept of going to the minimums. And incentivizing going larger to a maximum, and I'm I'm fine with what you're talking about, the maximum of a thousand, but the uh. That area in between, can we, would we do that in in, if there was support? Would we do that in an ordinance, would we do that separate from the ordinance to state that? Um, you can go eight fifty for the single bedroom, you can go up to nine fifty for that single bedroom if. Uh, if it was, if it met very low or very, very low income requirements for renters. And for a two bedroom, you could go, what the minimum was, I think a thousand? And you can go to, you can go to the twelve hundred if you got it into the very low or very, very low income rent category. Is that something we would do here with this, at this process or later?
I think this would, it would be best to do it as part of this process, um, and if if that's something that the council wanted to explore, I would recommend. Um, just continuing the first reading of this ordinance so staff could do a little bit more legwork and figure out the the proper way to to implement that into the. The ordinance and then we bring it back.
Because I just, I guess I think that if if we're gonna be able to. Make the most of this situation that we don't have much control over, that's one way to make the most of it is to try to meet. In in Rena, the little bit that I know, um, is we are well over on the top category. And we're well under on the very low categories. And this is one way to to try to improve that. Because we're we're talking about units that are more akin to, you know, smaller units that are more akin to those folks that fit those categories, generally speaking. Um, and I I'm not trying to generalize or demean, I just, I'm thinking that that where they might go. Um, we could, we could help meet that need at the same time that uh that we're dealing with this.
Uh, I think my my concern with that, Councilmember Fruman, is uh enforcement, how would we enforce that? Um, it's, it's more or less, we're looking at a contract between two two people, the landowner and the. And the tenant, how would we enforce the landlord? Not, you know, increasing by a certain amount just because they get extra square feet with?
How do, how do we deal with it with uh Foster's landing and the other developments that we use that have low income?
So, how does that work?
So, um, thank you, uh, uh, Mayor Mahampur for bringing that up, that I I was thinking of the exact same thing when Councilmember Fruman brought this up. Now with our affordable housing developments, we have the Affordable Housing um Agreement, right? And what we do um on an annual basis is we get property status reports from these affordable housing developments, which we review. It's a, it's a very um extensive process where we actually review the rental. We check the income to make sure these families are, you know, uh, not paying less or not paying more, um. And with the, with the current staffing that we have, um, it, and i- if we were to explore this option for A D U's. Uh, it it's definitely something we need to look as far as our resources are concerned.
So it would be quite a process. So it would be quite a process, it sounds like.
Correct.
And and people might not want to take advantage of it because of that process, actually.
Possibly.
Yeah. Okay. Um, Councilmember Hindi, comment?
Yeah, yeah, actually, I I got a question to clarify. I believe Councilmember Fruman mentioned that the understanding that for Rena purposes, we only have to identify not necessarily built. I know that was the case in the past, but Kai or Marlene or anyone from staff could shed a light on this. Is it not true that the state has moved or is moving away from that approach? If you also the city identified certain property for Rena numbers. It is moving to enforce these things moving forward or could you shed some light on that?
So, um, I can touch briefly on that. As Sophia mentioned earlier, we we are going to be doing our housing element update. And yes, the state is looking to cities to make policies that would facilitate housing development, right? At this point, um, at at least I have not heard of any type of enforcement where we we are required to build. They're they're saying make good policies, um, ma- have the resources and tools available for developers and homeowners to build more housing. But I I don't think they're going to. Punish us if if there isn't any housing being being built, because ultimately it's a private homeowner or developer that's that's building the homes.
But if you don't meet your numbers, you are still in deficiency. Although it's not your fault that you're not constructing the developer. However, correct me if I'm wrong, if we do put it. If we identify these properties for the Rena purposes. What we are doing really is we are quote unquote approving it. So if a developer comes in with a proper plan and it go to the permitting process, we cannot deny those projects.
Correct.
Okay.
Just really quick on that, on that same topic, that the state has precluded us from from not approving these projects anyway. For these up to eight hundred square feet, we can't deny it anyway. So if someone comes forward with a with an ADU for a property in town, that's eight hundred square feet, we can't say no. So why can't we count that as a as arena number?
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand what I was referring to, like, say you have an existing property now and they want to redevelop it. So we identified in our housing element that that is a property that is to meet our Rena numbers. So once you put it in there, now you have no power in denying that application unless it doesn't meet certain standards and requirements.
So, uh, Mayor, if I can add add a comment, um, and it's related to what Vice the Vice Mayor was talking about and and Councilmember Fruman. About our position and how do we navigate? Our city values and the character of our community and kind of protect ourselves as much as we can. Um, in the possibility of of a lobbyist. I was given that request and I've talked with a number of cities in San Mateo County. And and some of them do have lobbyists, you know, for various reasons that kind of monitor bills and. Take a look at where the city. Could take advantage or 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 play their best hand with any regulation that that's coming down. The difference, I think, is that these cities have spent time in talking through kind of their values, the things they want to protect. We have committed to the city in keeping you up to date, whether it's it's the League of California Cities. White papers or positions on different bills. But that's the key, I think, we would need to understand, does the entire council agree? What are the values we're trying to protect? What are the things that the community is saying to us? That we would need to have the assistance of a lobbyist for? And so our our goal is really to ratchet up those discussions and see if we can get some consensus among the city council. And then we can move to different steps of providing assistance in getting what the city council has put out as the vision for Foster City. But that discussion, part of partly will start with this joint meeting. And a discussion about housing issues in general. And we'll look for your comments in subsequent meetings so that we have a pretty clear picture of what the city council is trying to achieve.
Um, if I may too, uh, we we might want to think about after our our meeting with the the Planning Commission, a a study session. To to kind of go over what came out of that meeting so that we can all be on the same page. So that might be a good idea. Uh, Councilmember Wassey, yes?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, just a really quick comment. One, one of the things as we decide and agree on whether or not we will have a lobbyist and things of that nature, that will take time. I guess what I'm trying to say is that this law became effective, as I understand, January twenty twenty. Would we have had this discussion sooner? This is a question, there are a variety of factors that could impact that. I I don't know, and Kai, you can answer when once I'm done. I don't know if we have too many options with regards to this, uh, this, these laws and the ordinance that we need to come up with. At this time, so translating that to what we can do going forward is now the time. And perhaps the discussion that Dante you're talking about with Planning Commission is now the time to be proactive about some of the other bills that are in the making. So we are proactive, so even if we want to have measures such as reaching out to Sacramento or teaming up with other cities. We are proactive about it. So that that's the thought and maybe we we are already on top. I mean, I I raised this in one of the other council meetings as my comments to. To be proactive about what else is in the making, so we have enough time to react.
And and Councilmember, uh, just to respond to that, that's exactly, uh, one of the topics at the joint study session with the Planning Commission. The City Attorney's Office is putting together a list of bills that, and I think there's something like twenty or or twenty or so bills. That will provide you with kind of a general overview. We have sent all of those bills to the city council and asked if there are certain ones you want highlighted. I don't think we got any response. Uh, I would encourage the council members to take a look at that list and general description. Um, and we can spend more time on those items, but that's exactly the intent of the item for the twenty first. And that was based on your your recommendation.
Thank you, Dante. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Fruman, yes?
Thank you, Dante, just really quick, because it's not totally on this topic is when we're talking about a lobbyist. I think what I heard you saying is we need to set a legislative policy, kind of the the various areas, whether it's housing, transportation, taxes, whatever. And kind of what our city position is so that the lobbyist knows what they're looking for, what to report to us, so we know what to respond to, is that correct?
Well, so, um, i- if I can be a little bit more clear, there there are lobbyists who specialize in different things, right? I think before we explore seeking out a lobbyist, I think we need to have a discussion about legislation related to housing. And we can understand a little bit of what council is trying to achieve and what we would like the lobbyist to do. Right? Because it it can be very expensive for, um, to retain a lobbyist with not a whole lot of return sometimes. So I think we need to be crystal clear about what our intent is. I don't know, Kai, have you had anything to add to that?
Yeah, I think that's right on, Dante.
Councilmember Hindi?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, so question, I don't know if anyone knows the answer. So the League, League of California Cities was opposing these measures. And the League of California Cities, representing many cities in the state and specifically on this issue, many of us. Many cities are objecting to one size fits all kind of approach to the housing crisis that we have. And the League of California Cities does have lobbyists. And they have lobbied against these bills that they opposing. Which is reflective of most cities or a lot of cities that are part of the league. And if they were not successful, why would a city like Foster City, would they, one lobbyist? Be, I understand that you probably would approach it differently because we're gonna bring the uniqueness or the specific circumstances that we have. It might have different, but I just want to. Be clear that these bills had been fought by many. And by organizations that have quite a number of memberships. And they have spent a lot of money. And and so I think. I just want to understand if anyone knows, before we go down that road. What would be our chances, if you will, to go invest in such an effort?
I I personally, I wasn't thinking about limiting our our lobbyist discussion to simply housing. Um, I would agree with you that that if there are people up there already doing, um, the work that we're asking for right now. And it's not successful, there's no point in in piggybacking that. But there are other things that that come up in the legislature that we want to see and whether it's to bring something up to to make a change or to. Comment on something that they're considering. For me, this just happens to be coming up during a housing discussion. I think there's other word, other ways that we could have influence.
No, no, I I agree, I mean, we do need to make sure our point is heard, our position is heard. And I think that's, we, I mean, for me, I would always done it and I'm sure the mayor is doing it. We always reach out to our Assembly representative and Senate representatives. And quite frankly, I, uh, you know, reached out in the past to even those who are beyond our district. And just to kind of share personal concerns about our city and our our circumstances. But, uh, yeah, I mean, I'm happy to listen more as to where this discussion goes.
Okay, so where are we? So.
Did we close the public hearing? I'm not sure.
Yes, I closed the public hearing. Yes. So I guess I'm looking for a motion, if there is a motion out there. Of whether to. Vote on the the ordinance of the city of Foster City approving amendments to those chapters.
I'm okay to approve.
Uh, Councilmember Fruman, did you have a question?
We we can second your question.
Okay.
I'll I'll second it for the purpose of the question is. If if we move forward as Councilmember Hindi has has moved, is we'd be agreeing with the the sizes that staff has put forward. Now would be the time, if we wanted to minimize those sizes, would be to say that as a change to staff's recommendation, correct?
That I understand.
So the motion that's on the floor and seconded is with the higher standards, the higher square footage.
Right, would 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 you be willing to amend your motion, Councilmember Hindi?
So let me, let me, I let me verify something. And and I think if I'm not mistaken, we had, we heard that prior during this discussion. That staff and the Planning Commission did not really go to the maximum they had. They kind of were able to strike a balance, if if you will, is that right, Marlene? If we didn't go to the maximum allowed, we had the minimum and we just went way a little bit over the minimum, is that correct?
I I'll let Sophia answer that.
Uh, uh, yes, the Councilmember Hindi, so for single family dwellings, we did go with the maximum twelve hundred square feet. And but for the multifamily dwellings, we went with the, uh, you know, a smaller number, which is eight hundred fifty square feet for studios or one bedroom. And one thousand square feet for two or more bedrooms.
And the general scope of things. We kind of evaluated our staff and the Planning Commission, perhaps you could share with us more, Sophia, thank you for your answer. You kind of evaluate and there was a reasoning why in this kind of ADUs and multifamily was to eight fifty and why the single family was. Would you please share with us what was the reasoning behind that?
So that was the fee, sorry, yes, Marlene, you can.
Yeah, let me, let me handle that. So I think, um, I I wouldn't say all the commissioners, but there was at least, uh, two, three commissioners that felt that. A, we would not be seeing as many ADU applications in Foster City, so they weren't really concerned about the allowing a slightly greater size. And what we also heard was, um, um, just based on the the size of the family of. Allowing something slightly more than the state minimum would would probably work better for the for the families renting these units out. So we heard a couple of those comments and Sophia, if there's anything you want to add, you could, you could add.
No, I think that's something, thank you, Marlene.
But but as I understand it, you recommended the lower numbers, a thousand. And they they decided to up it to twelve hundred, right?
Right, that's right.
Okay.
If I could just speak from my recollection, uh, and Sophia or Marlene, please jump in if if you have a different recollection. But my my understanding from the Planning Commission that night was that, uh, they felt that. Larger lots with larger existing primary dwellings could accommodate larger ADUs. And so having the maximum set higher, but still subject to things like floor area ratio. Would accomplish sort of a spectrum of sizes based on on lots. Rather than just having a set maximum.
Yeah, uh, that they they did mention that, you're right.
So the city has a lot of say on those kind of ADUs that are that size, right? And of course, there's also the design. Objective that's still gonna come back to discussion, but also there are other requirements, right? So it's not automatic that a twelve hundred will just be approved.
Right, and Councilmember Hindi, that the the reason why, uh, that's specifically why we have the provision in the code where we are saying that if it. If it exceeds the state minimum, you would be subject to the state's underlying or the city's underlying zoning regulation. That was, um, our way or the mechanism we can use to still somehow regulate anything beyond the state minimum.
Okay.
That state minimum is is eight hundred for the small and a thousand for the for a two bedroom? Or is it eight hundred period, anything over eight hundred?
Eight hundred square feet, as of right.
So regardless of whether it's if even if it's a two bedroom, we can regulate because it's over eight hundred square feet. Because it, because the state minimum for the two bedroom was a thousand square feet, I think. That would seem to be contradicting what the state is doing with the with the s- uh, single bedroom one at eight hundred.
That that's right, Councilmember Fruman, that this is, in many ways, it's easier to just build an ADU with your hands than to understand how they drafted this law. So let me, let me do my my best to 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 explain this. So when you actually set a maximum, that's going to apply no matter what the existing conditions of the property are. That's what the maximums are in in the law. So you can't set a maximum, a universal maximum, that's less than eight fifty or a thousand if you have two bedroom or more. That being said, you can still subject the ADU to your normal. Building regulations, zoning requirements. And if those zoning requirements. Preclude you from building a thousand square foot, two bedroom ADU because of. The inability to meet the setback, the inability to meet the floor area ratio, those sort of things. Then your effective maximum for that property is less than the universal maximum. So in those cases, it 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 can go below your maximum, but it can never drop below eight hundred. Because if you, if it's gonna drop it below eight hundred, then they get the eight hundred and you have to figure out the best way to accommodate that.
So even if we did allow the the up to twelve hundred as staff is recommended through the Planning Commission. There are regulations in place that would preclude. Them from going to twelve hundred in in all cases. You know, I have a I have a relatively small backyard, I don't know that I could fit a twelve hundred square foot ADU in my backyard, but it's also more than fifty percent of the size of my home. So I wouldn't be able to do. but it's also more than fifty percent of the size of my home, so I wouldn't be able to do it based on that as well, correct?
That's right, yeah.
So that was my understanding, and that's why, you know, I'm not extremely concerned because we still, as a city, has rules and regulations that need to be followed that will limit based on the criteria and the regulation that we have. On those larger unit spaces, so.
Okay. Um, yeah, I can, I can see that, I can go, I can go with that. So, any more comments or questions? We have a motion and a second on the floor. So we have a motion and a second, we'll have a roll call, vote.
Councilmember Ghani?
Yes.
Hindi?
Yes.
Awasthi?
Yes.
Fruman?
Yes.
Mayor Mahonpor?
I don't like it, but yes.
Motion carries five, erm, motion passes five zero with all council members voting yes.
Thank you. Uh, let's see, next item, please.
Item eight, new business, eight point one. By minute order, consider appointment of three citizens and representatives from two businesses to either a two-year term or three-year term on the levy bond oversight committee. Citizen applicants are Mark Allen, Mark Belsky, Falgun Desai, Robert Fitzgerald, Michael Hampton, um, Dan James, Shankar Kinker, Gaurav Kishwani, King Liu, Eli Rapage, Amit Sehanyi, Patrick Sullivan, Bob Tesler, Paul Williams. And the business applicants are Aldic Root from Gilead and Krista Dixon from Hudson Pacific Properties.
Thank you. Staff, um, if there are any comments, if you wanna provide a public comment, please raise your hand during this time. After the staff report's presented, we'll call you on, on you to speak. Um, staff report, please.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, in, in June, the council or the voters passed Measure P. Um, and it was to issue the, the bonds for the levy improvement project. In December of two thousand nineteen, um, the council adopted bylaws and established the oversight committee. And you charged the city clerk's office with soliciting applications um, for a five-member committee, three residents and two business representatives. And on, by July sixth, the council actually directed me to review all of the applications submitted uh, for the committee, um, and make recommendations of appointment uh, to the city council. And so we received fourteen applications uh, from um, um, from our residents and two uh, from our business applicants. And we've included all of those applications in your staff report, attached your staff report. Um, all of the applicants met the general qualifications and standards for the committee that, that you've set. And so um, any um, member uh, of, of, of the community that submitted an application, you know, there, there's not uh, really a way to go wrong um, on your selection. Uh, for an enhanced effectiveness, staff is recommending that the city council also consider appointees with experience and or skills um, in financial management, construction management, civic engagement and communication. Because those line up nicely with um, what the oversight committee is charged to do. Um, and so based on the applications submitted, staff um, made a recommendation that's included in your staff report. Um, the residents, staff is recommending or, or for the resident members are Bob Fitzgerald, um, King Li, Liu, sorry, and Bob Tesler. Um, and for the business members, um, we got two applications. Um, those applications and businesses also um, are the largest landowners in, in Foster City. And those businesses are Eldogroot from Gilead and Krista Dixon, representing Hudson Pacific Properties. Um, all of the applicants were um, invited to participate and attend this meeting. And so if council has any question, questions of the applicants, um, we can definitely unmute them and um, council can ask those questions. So the, so the recommendation uh, tonight is to appoint the three residents and the two businesses to serve on the oversight committee. And as you're doing that, we, we'd also like you to um, identify on separate motions, each seat and, and whether that seat will serve a two-year or a three-year term. Um, that completes my staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Uh, thank you, Dante. I, I do have an update, um, I think it's on this item. Uh, the levy bond oversight committee appointments tonight, Eli Rapage withdrew his application. Priscilla, you sent this out?
Yes, I did.
So there were four people, Eli withdraw, withdrew, Dan James withdrew, Amit uh, would like to support the city manager recommendation, and Michael Hampton's moving out of the area, so he's withdrawing his application, right?
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we, we knew that information. Um, Councilmember Fruman, I see your hand up.
Just a question on the uh, the number, could probably scan quickly and try to find it, but one business at three-year, one business at two-year? Is that correct? How many twos and threes are we doing? And does that mean we have to, for the people who are on a two-year? I, I guess I'm confused by the two and the three, it's a three-year project, basically. Um, the two-year people will be replaced two-thirds of the way through the project for a, a person for a one-year term? Does that still work?
So, so that um, was put in place in order to kinda stagger the terms so that you would have coverage the full way. Um, and um, I don't know if Kai wants to talk a little bit, a little bit about that. If council wanted to change that or amend that, I think that would mean um, um, amending the bylaws. But through the bylaws, that was put in place to stagger the terms.
And, and how many of each was provisioned in the bylaws?
So that's, that's up to the council, um, a recommendation from staff, it's not in the staff report. But one way you can do it is um, you could have one of the resident members serve a two-year term and one of the business members to serve a two-year term, and the rest three-year terms.
And, and I guess the way we would do that is uh, select the first resident member and first business member for a two-year term, and then the remaining two resident members and one business member for a three-year term? Is that like, is that like section five point four of the bylaws, Dante, or something like that?
Yes, that is.
So um, so I'm, I'm okay with uh, with the staff recommendation, I don't know if anybody else has, has comments. Um, Councilmember Fruman, sure, go ahead.
I, I, I do, I uh, when we first received copies of these applications uh, prior to making the decision to have the city manager review and make a recommendation, um, I thought we were gonna do the selection as we normally do. And I reviewed all the applications, and I looked at different things such as what Dante's talking about. And um, I guess the easiest way to say it from, from my perspective here is I, I don't really have an issue with Mr. DeGroot, Ms. Dixon, Mr. Fitzgerald, or Mr. Liu. Um, I would prefer to see Mr. Kishwani um, rather than Mr. Tesler. And this is not, it's not a personal thing, I appreciate the fact that a lot of people per- uh, participated. But in Mr. Kishwani's application, he demonstrated civic participation, he's got a background that will benefit the committee. I think most importantly, he made specific reference to this project in his application. And most importantly, one of his interests was transparency, which is exactly what we're trying to accomplish on this committee. And uh, I think for those reasons, I would, I would rather see Mr. Kishwani as one of the uh, participants.
Okay, thank you. Um, anybody else? Comments? Yes, Councilmember Hindi.
So are we gonna nominate uh, who's gonna be the first from each uh, from business community or from the resident community?
Well, I, I actually was just thinking about accepting the um, uh, staff's recommendation, but since we have uh, a little bit of a disagreement on that, uh, how, how should we handle this, Kai?
Uh, it is the council's um, ability to disagree with the recommendation. And what I would um, what I would recommend is that you just make a motion to sub out any applicants that uh, you think should be on the committee that aren't part of the recommendation. Um, and um, staff will take that, take that direction.
Okay, so, so John, are you, are you saying that you would rather have, instead of Mr. Tesler, you'd rather have Kishwani?
Correct, yes.
So if I may.
Yeah, Councilmember Ghani, did you have?
Yeah, just a quick question, so Kai, uh, uh, as you, as we make the motion, uh, should we also uh, say which member, or you know, the order kinda matters too, right? So the first two would be for um, two years, and the next three would be for three years. So maybe one uh, resident member, one business member, then two re- resident members, one business member, and so that way you get coverage across all?
Could do two motions, one for you, two years and one for three years.
Yeah.
You could, yeah, you could handle it either way, you could do one motion and just have the motion specify who's two and who's three, or you could, you could, you could nominate and approve the twos, and then nominate and approve the threes, however you wanna handle that.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Hindi, yes?
Okay, let me, let me um, try to take a stab at this. So I would like to move to approve the staff recommendation with Mr. Fitzgerald for a three-year term and Ms. DeGroot for a three-year term.
Do I have a second?
Second?
I didn't, I didn't hear, I didn't hear the twos and threes, I'm sorry.
I didn't hear the.
I'm sorry, Kai, um, my motion was to accept staff report and to appoint Mr. Fitzgerald for the three-year term from the residents and Mr. DeGroot from the business community for the three-year term.
Wouldn't we have one more?
One more.
So you're recommending that, that three people be two years?
One more from the resident for three year?
Yes.
Okay, um.
You can amend the motion?
Sure, so I, I don't have a preference, I'm happy for anyone to add someone for the three, but those two I thought were important, given their eh, experience to be in at least a three years. I'm happy to have one of my colleagues add another resident for the three year.
I'd recommend Mr. Liu.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second for um, Mr. Fitzgerald, Aldogroot, and Mr. Liu for three-year terms, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so let's have a roll call vote on that one.
Councilmember, oh, sorry, Councilmember Ghani?
Yes.
Hindi?
Yes.
Awasthi?
Yes.
Fruman?
No.
Mayor Mahonpor?
Yes.
Motion carries four one with council members Ghani, Hindi, Awasthi, and Mayor Mahonpor voting yes, and Councilmember Fruman voting no.
Okay, so now we have the uh, that was a three-year, now we have the two-year uh, terms. So we had.
I thought you identified the other two as two years, didn't you?
Was, were those two or three years? No, those were the three-year.
I, my, my motion was to staff report for all, but I chose the three, and then obviously by default, the one for the two would be as recommended by staff.
What, was that clear to everybody, that that's what the motion was?
Uh, yes. Isn't it clear to you?
Because if it was, if it was just the three-year members of Fitzgerald, Liu, and DeGroot, I would have voted yes. But if other people, if, if everybody agrees that they understood that we're voting on five people, I'm good with this. All right.
That, that was how I had the motion.
Councilmember Awasthi, Council Vice Mayor Ghani, and uh, Mayor Mahonpor, please respond to that, otherwise we have to redo this.
I, I'm, I'm fine with it.
Okay, yeah, I'm fine with that.
I think staff is clear.
Right.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So um, I am going to see if people would uh, uh, agree with me. We'll have, go through eight point two, but because of the late time and we do have a closed session after this, I'm gonna ask if eight point three and eight point four could be um, continued to another uh, meeting?
Sure.
Uh, if everybody agrees with that, because we are getting late and we still do have some reports that are, I think are important to go through, so.
I have no objection.
I'm good with that.
Okay. Okay, then we're going to uh, continue those, but what I would like to do right now is take a little five-minute break, if that's okay with everybody.
Yes, thank you.
Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay, we'll be back in five minutes. Thank you. Thank you. Is everybody back?
I'm back.
Looks like everybody's here. Can we move forward, Priscilla?
Um, let me just check.
Okay.
Trying to get a little bit more comfortable.
Um, I think we should be fine since it's through Zoom and we're recording.
Okay, okay, so let's move forward with eight point two.
Um, eight point two interview and by minute order, consider appointment of one member. To an unexpired partial term from January first, twenty twenty through December thirty first. Twenty twenty-two on the audit committee. Applicants listed in alphabetical order are Bob Byers. Shruti Gupta and Robert Schwartzser. Anyone who wishes to provide a public comment, please raise your hand during this time and. We'll call on you to speak after the staff report.
Thank you, so staff report, please.
Mayor and members of the city council, it is recommended that. The city council by minute order, consider the appointment of one citizen to an unexpired partial term from January first, twenty twenty through December thirty first, twenty twenty-two on the audit committee. With this appointment, the audit committee will have a full complement. That concludes my staff report.
Thank you, uh, do we have any public comments on this one?
I do not see any raised hands.
Okay, thank you. So what happened is we'll conduct interviews uh, for these appointments to the audit committee. Uh, applicants I believe are here, are they all three here?
Um, Robert Schwartzser is not here, he was here and then um, he had to leave, but he wrote a statement.
Okay.
I think Bob Byers is here.
Okay.
Uh, and so is uh, Shruti Gupta.
Yes.
Okay, good. Uh, so each applicant is going to have three minutes to explain qualifications and why they should be appointed to uh, the committee. Uh, upon completion of the interviews, we'll open the floor for nominations. The first applicant nominated to reach majority vote at council will be appointed. Uh, so we're going to proceed with the interviews and Priscilla, who is first?
Quick question, were we going to put?
Bob.
Interviewee in a um, on hold?
Yes, please.
Yes.
Okay.
If we could take Bob Byers first. Um, I'll start the time.
Okay. Mr. Byers?
I'm going to put uh, Ms. Gupta on uh, on hold.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Byers, can you unmute?
Hello.
Hello. We can hear you, but we can't see you.
Uh, is there something I can do for that? Just one second.
There we go. Hi, welcome, you have three minutes.
Councilmembers, you are an amazing group. I've learned a whole lot about city management, uh, especially when someone said that. Um, it is a lot easier to uh, build an eight hundred square foot IDU, IDU with your hands than tackle this particular topic.
Yeah.
Uh, as an applicant, we've been asked to uh, talk about the reasons and um, and um. Ob- objectives that we might have for joining the uh, audit committee. Um, I have two of each. Um, on the reasons, I have a pretty uh, unique um. Financial expertise with respect to the county, the cities uh, who may be largest asset. Certainly the largest asset that requires a continuous observation following the end of the markets. Um, and that's the um, the, the city's um, investment portfolio. Uh, I managed Monterey County's um, portfolio for five years, uh, as you know, just like San Mateo County. Um, the um. The rules to um, to manage an investment portfolio in a county is the same as the, as, as the cities, it's as, it's part of the same code. I did that for five years, um, and locally I'd uh, worked for a larger institution, but double credit in fifteen, uh, one, one and a half billion dollars for eight years. Um, and then prior to that, uh, I was a founding uh, and managing partner of Golden Gate S, uh, Golden Gate Securities, which is a, was a interest of. Excuse me, it was a broker dealer for institutions and most of our clients had to do with cities and counties and uh. Um, retirement funds, so I've been on both sides of it. Um, in addition to uh, that, um, another part of it is my institutional knowledge of the audit committee. I was on the audit committee and. When it came time to, uh, when I was cycled into the chair portion, when we had to uh, select another uh, external. Uh, audit um, firm and uh, uh, would lead the team and the, and um, and looking and selecting and the, the um. Uh, recommendation to the council was, was uh, taken, was uh, accepted. So those are two square unique items having to do with one area of expertise. Most of the people in the um. Audit committee uh, are, uh, look very close. Thirty seconds?
Yes.
Okay, um, two issues, uh, concerned about the outlook. There's never been a, a time like today in terms of uh, markets. And myself interest is to make sure that the, uh, I, I know what I don't know and what I do know is how to take care of. Uh, strategies to make sure that all markets will take care of the need for safety, liquidity and yield of the portfolio. Like we do it, ding ding ding.
Thank you so much. Do we have any uh, questions from the council?
No.
Oh, okay, no questions. Thank you so much for uh, joining us tonight and uh, we'll hope to see you later.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Shruti Gupta. Hello, how are you?
Hi, I'm doing fine, thank you. Uh, I'd like to take this opportunity to uh, thank our firefighters, uh, they put their lives at risk to make our now near normal life. Um, um, uh, follow the routine that is now near normal now. Um, I would also like to take the opportunity to um, uh, thank you for the opportunity. To uh, present myself to the council uh, for the audit committee role. I'm Shruti Gupta, I'm a certified fraud examiner and I work in a Fortune five hundred company as a fraud and risk product owner. Uh, my career spans over eighteen years in the financial and healthcare industries. Um, and in my current role, I um, work very heavily with auditors, internal and external. Providing them with data and any questions that they may have regarding uh, the audit process or the data that I've provided. As you can see, it's a very challenging role and no two days are the same, but I'm ex- I extremely love what I do. And um, but equally passionate, I'm about um, playing um, playing an active role in my community. Uh, be it um, teaching the inner city kids in Hartford, Connecticut to Meals on Wheels and um. I just knitted, I think, over a hundred blankets and hats for Nico babies, uh, they um, they hold a very special uh, place in my heart. Uh, this summer, I uh, involved my high schooler uh, to uh, give to his uh, charity organization. We. Um, we employed a very unique approach. We actually sold lemons that we grow, organic lemons that we grow in our garden. And we collected the funds to uh, to uh, give to his charity that he believes in very strongly. Um, I have lived in this city for over eight years uh, with my family and I want to be a part of the city's. Uh, growth and its success. Uh, along with the years of experience with working with auditors in risk and fraud, I can make a positive impact in Foster City. Given this opportunity to serve as a member of uh, the um, audit committee. It's my sincere and um, honest hope to uh, help the council. And work under their guidance for the betterment of Foster City. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, thank you very much. And now we have a statement from Mr. Schwartzser. Oh, were there any questions? I'm sorry, any questions for Shruti? Okay. Uh, Priscilla, did you want to read the statement from Mr. Schwartzser?
Sure. I began visiting Foster City way back in nineteen seventy-six, just after my uncle relocated his family from the east coast. After numerous family vacations to the area, I finally made the move in nineteen ninety-eight. I relocated throughout the Bay Area for the next twelve years or so, finally returning in twenty ten to permanently live with my family in Foster City. My wife grew up in Foster City attending bautage where my daughter Naomi is still enrolled. My son Alexander just started his freshman year at San Mateo High School. I gained an interest in the city government and also became a search through the Foster City Fire Department. I was a member of the San Mateo Foster City School District Financial Audit and Review Committee, which was tasked with audit and oversight responsibility. For the school district's expenditures. I also donate time to the Shriners Hospital for Children as a patient driver, transporting patients and their families to the facilities in Sacramento. I began my professional career here in California as a residential and commercial property manager, preparing annual budgets for multiple sites. Tracking of expenses and auditing monthly financial reports was a major responsibility. For the past three years, I have been in a more behind the scenes role as a re- redevelopment project manager. My job duties include generating scopes of work, soliciting bids, assembling contracts. Managing contractor work and most importantly, as related to the open audit committee position. Creating budgets, managing, auditing and financial reporting on numerous multimillion dollar projects throughout the Bay Area. Some of our projects are right here in Foster City, so I am interested in seeing Foster City do well on both a personal and professional level. My goal in being appointed to the Foster City Audit Committee is to help the city with my financial auditing and reporting experience. And attention to detail while expanding my personal knowledge and experience in the inner workings of our city government. Thank you for a consideration and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, so those are our three people, since um. Since Councilmember Awasthi is the liaison to the audit committee, uh, I am going to permit her the first nomination.
Thank you, mayor, I would like to nominate Bob Byers.
Okay. Do I have any other nominations? If there are no other nominations, then do we have to vote? Do we have to do a?
Yes, we should still do a vote.
We'll do a roll call. Um.
Councilmember Ghani?
Yes, and I'd like to thank everybody for, for applying.
Hindi? Awasthi?
Yes.
Fruman?
Yeah, I love it, yeah.
Did I go through, yes?
Sorry, Fruman? No. Mayor Mahonpor?
Yes, and I'd also would like to thank everybody for applying. Please continue to apply, we have many positions in Foster City.
Motion carries five zero with all councilmembers voting yes.
Thank you, all right, welcome, Mr. Byers.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. And thank you for, for stepping up. Good night. Uh, next item, please.
Um, so we're skipping to item nine, reports. Nine point one, report on closed session, date August seventeenth, twenty twenty.
Um, there was a closed session uh, for uh, conference with labor negotiations on August, uh, August seventeenth. And there were uh, no reportable actions taken.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item nine point two, update on COVID nineteen. Anyone who wishes to provide public comment, please raise your hand during this time and we'll call on you after the staff report.
Okay, staff report, please.
Thank you, mayor, um, I just wanted to update the council. Um, about since the last time we had a meeting, as you know, the county was placed in a purple tier. Um, which is part of the state's new color-coded reopening system. Um, in August thirty-first, uh, San Mateo County retail and shopping centers were able to operate inside, but at twenty-five percent capacity. Um, we are uh, required to uh, continue the proclamation of, of an emergency every sixty days. We did so April sixth, June first, July twentieth, um, and we, we would like to do it again. Um, and extend uh, the proclamation of a local emergency for another uh, sixty days. Uh, given the fact that we have not entirely um, abated the emergency. Um, and we'd like to continue it and extend the proclamation to deal with the threat of, of COVID. So um, that is generally my report. Um, the request that we have is to obviously adopt the resolution. Um, that extends the emergency. I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you. Uh, do we have any public comment on this one? I don't see any raised hands. Okay, so any uh, comments or questions from the council? Okay, I don't see any, so I'm looking for a motion.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Ghani?
Yes.
Hindi?
Yes.
Awasthi?
Yes.
Fruman?
Yes.
Mayor Mahonpor?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero with all councilmembers voting yes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Uh, nine point three, discussion on COVID nineteen, community assistance. Anyone who wishes to provide public comment, please raise your hand during this time and we'll call on you after the staff report.
Okay, staff report.
Thank you, uh, mayor, this is the standing item uh, that we have for assistance programs. There are two things to report, um, council asked that I reach out uh, to the county, to um, to. Um, council asked that I reach out uh, to the county to um, determine um, what we can do to assist with continuation of great plates. Um, the program that, that provides food to seniors. It was also a program that a lot of our local restaurants considered as a lifeline. Um, I reached out to Mike Callagie. Um, and the county is looking to extend the program to the end of um, the month. The prog- the program and funding actually ended, um, actually today, um, the eighth. Um, but the county will be extending the program to the end of the month. One of the things that he said was it's a very expensive program and just twenty additional days um, is costing the county two million dollars. Um, but the county has made that commitment. Um, and he asked that other cities, um, especially Foster City, write to the governor's office, explain how valuable the program has been and the fact that it's been really a lifeline for um, our businesses would be an appropriate approach um, to the program. The other thing that um, to report is staff uh, was asked to um, do a survey and try to identify potential collaboration efforts with the Chamber of Commerce, um, do a, a survey of, of our, our small businesses and retail businesses, um, and provide counsel with the summary. I provided you with that uh, memo earlier today. Um, over the last uh, few weeks, Vanessa Brandon has kind of spearheaded that, and I wanted her to just very briefly provide a summary uh, of, of the memo, and then we'd be happy to answer any questions. Vanessa?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. I apologize if I'm a little hoarse. I'm fighting a cold, so I'll try to speak up as much as I can. Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. Recently, city staff and the Chamber of Commerce pushed, pushed out a confidential survey of the city's approximately one hundred retailers, asking for detailed information about their current financial situation, time left on their lease, previous grant and loan funding they've received, and what type of assistance they've, they need for continued operations. Additionally, the chamber spent considerable time connecting staff with retailers that they had been engaged with over the past six months as part of their Chamber Cares Initiative, both members and non-members, either by directly reaching out to businesses or setting up meetings to gather responses. All told, city staff and the chamber heard from thirty-five of the city's approximately one hundred retail businesses. Three major themes emerged from the outreach efforts. First, every respondent mentioned at minimum a twenty-five percent drop in revenue since the start of COVID nineteen, with a majority of the businesses averaging sixty-five percent drop in revenue. Second, thirty-one of the thirty-five businesses who responded mentioned an inability to pay their rent either in full or at all. And finally, some of the businesses mentioned negative experiences relating to neat lease negotiations or lease or operational issues at their respective shopping or retail centers. In terms of types of assistance needed by the businesses, while each had different needs, almost all mentioned needing help with rent reduction or rent forgiveness. Other assistance requested included additional paycheck protection program or economic injury disaster loan funds, other penalty-free grants, help negotiating leases either for renewals, rent reductions, or even early terminations, or assistance with marketing. For context, Foster City's survey responses are in line with national and San Mateo County surveys conducted back in May in terms of revenue decreases and an inability to pay expenses. That's an overview of the survey, and I'd be happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Vanessa and Dante. Um, any questions from the council? Yes, Councilmember Hindi?
Thank you. Thank you, Vanessa and Dante, for the report. Vanessa, are you happy with the thirty-five percent roughly of respondents? Is that typical or is that good? Would you have liked to see more or is that good enough?
I actually felt that was high, um, considering that most of our business, especially our um, retail businesses tend to be sort of mom and pop businesses. We did a lot of, um, I, I personally did a lot of walking to do in-person, uh, to try to do in-person interviews. We've even passed out um, flyers that had the, the link to the survey. Uh, we, we, the chamber set up meetings, Zoom meetings with, you know, specific centers to try to get as many respondents as we could. We felt thirty-five was, was a, a considerable number. The only uh, center we didn't get any responses from was Marlin Cove. Um, but we did again do some, some considerable outreach to them.
Thank you. Uh, I, I've done my unofficial survey by visiting our businesses and the shopping centers and trying to get a better understanding of the challenges, and they are pretty consistent with your survey. Uh, mostly really, uh, everybody's major problem is rent and how are they gonna come up with the rent? Or even those who, whose rent is being uh, deferred to a later time is catching up with them. And the lack of federal funding, the PDP was helpful when it first came in, but now they are at the ti- at a place where if they do not get assistance, uh, many of them gonna have to close the doors, and that's really unfortunate, uh, as this pandemic has extended to quite some time now and um, uh, I'm extremely concerned and disturbed, quite frankly, by what's going on in our retail uh, in Foster City. Yeah. As a small business owner, I know uh, if you're not able to pay your rent, you could let it storm for a little bit and eventually the uh, reckoning will happen. What are you, what are you gonna do? How much can a business continue to pile on these bills? And we are seeing the impact of that. Some businesses are just leaving. They can't, they cannot sustain it. So it's very troubling and frustrating, quite frankly, that the federal government is not stepping up to meet this obligation to uh, its taxpayers. Now, because in good times, uh, the business community has paid its taxes, and the federal government and the state both benefited from those tax revenues. Now, when the business community needs them, they are being abandoned, and that's really unfortunate. So it's just, you know, sad commentary, but it is commentary that I needed to share because I, I feel it. I've felt it when talking to the businesses in our community, and it's pretty sad.
Thank you. Other comments? Vice Mayor Ghani, do you?
I want to thank uh, City Manager Hall, uh, Vanessa, uh, our chamber um, for partnering up and really working together on this. Um, you know, based on what you received in the survey results, do you have any recommendations, so things we should be focusing on to help the business community? I know some of the things we can't really help with with regards to lease negotiations and things like that. Um, but what kind of service to the top, uh, for you guys to, to really focus on?
And Vanessa, you want to respond because there were uh, several recommendations that were included in the analysis?
There were, and it's, it's challenging to focus on just one because the revenue, it directly affects expenses. And for me, I, when I looked at the, when I did the analysis on, based on the survey results, in order to increase revenue, you have to get customers out using our retail businesses. Really, what I saw with that is um, promotion, marketing, which is what some of the businesses requested. Now, that's limited because of, obviously, there's certain capacity that some of our businesses, specifically our restaurants, cannot do indoor dining right now. Um, but we have seen some success with our Stamp Me program. Uh, we've added a few businesses along the way. We've got about a thousand, almost, actually, now, uh, as of writing this, I almost went to eleven hundred customers signed up. Um, and that is an, that is an area of opportunity to add more businesses and add more customers connect, doing that connection there. Um, another area of, in terms of increasing revenue, would be to partner with the chamber to do some aggressive marketing of our businesses to our residents, because those are the folks who are in town. We do know that a lot of our businesses are currently, especially our larger businesses, that tend to send employees out, especially their daytime employees, out into Foster City to, you know, use our restaurants, use our services, are simply not in town right now. The most, a, a lot of their folks are working from home. So our, our residents really are the folks who can support local. And so I feel like there's some opportunity there. Um, and I think that that's uh, an area that I'd like to see us explore. That's one of my recommendations. And I think that's another recommendation that came from the chamber as well. The inability to pay expenses is, is one of the more challenging pieces because I, I think I'm, I, I mentioned in, in my report that if you, you multiply the number of businesses who are behind in rent times a hundred, it's, it's just not, it's not doable in terms of what the city can do. Um, some cities have enacted commercial eviction moratoriums. Um, and I think uh, the East Palo Alto, Menlo Park, Millbury Pacifica, San Mateos, South San Francisco, and Portola Valley have all enacted um, commercial eviction moratoriums. Um, I don't know if that's something that the council is interested in, but I did include that in my, um, in my report. And then another strategy is opening up one-on-one discussions with shopping center property managers and owners to create strategy center by center rather than citywide. In terms, oh, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
And then in terms of lease or operational issues, um, some of our tenants are looking for um, professional uh, business experience. They're looking for folks who can help them with lease negotiations. They need lawyers, they need folks who can read leases, and, and they just don't have the um, the understanding about how to negotiate on their own behalf, especially when, during these times. Um, and so that's an area that, you know, I think again that maybe the chamber can, can help with them, that we might be able to partner with the chamber on. But again, these are also, these are recommendations that I think need a lot more. Um, we need to d- uh, drill down deeper into a lot of these recommendations.
Got it. Uh, you know, with regards to Stamp Me, uh, how much of the twenty-five thousand dollars that we allocated to kind of promote uh, Stamp Me, how much of that's been used up?
Approximately seventy-four hundred.
Okay. And we have eleven hundred customers?
That's correct.
Okay. And what, do you remember what that number was when we started? Was it like in the five, two to five hundred or was it more?
I, I believe so. I think it was about three. Actually, I think it was even lower than that. I think it was between three and four hundred.
Three and four hundred? Okay. Um, have we seen a lot of uh, repeat customers coming on there?
We have, but we've also seen a lot of new folks sign up, especially when we do increased marketing for the program.
Okay. And you're using social media for marketing for the program as well as, you know, raising awareness uh, just at the, at the local businesses?
That's correct. The businesses also promote it. Um, they have the, they have the beacon with, with a, with a cardboard promotion up. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry. Yeah, you're saying that they just, uh, the businesses also promote it because they have the beacon?
That's correct. And they've seen a lot of um, folks who they've never seen before. I was speaking with one of my, uh, one of the Stamp Me businesses um, just last week, and he mentioned that he has, uh, he's seen folks that he's never seen before come in, use the Stamp Me uh, voucher, which is great, but then they'll come back as a repeat customer. So he's, he really appreciates that extra business.
So are we at about fifteen or twenty percent coverage of businesses with the Stamp Me or out of the hundred or so?
I think we're about ten percent right now.
About ten percent right now. Okay. So there's an opportunity for growth there. Um, okay.
Uh, the, one comment um, that, that I would make in what I think, not only what we're grappling with, but the shopping centers and the businesses, is we don't know where the bottom is. We don't know what we're trying to solve for because we're in the middle of the crisis. So i- it's, i- if, if you're trying to hit a moving target, it's a little difficult to try to negotiate lease terms um, when you, you, you come and, and say, well, we don't know, you know, how long we want to, want to enact any type of deferment. Um, we're getting closer to, to getting a handle on um, where the bottom is as, as we collect some of the trending data. But if you look at a lot of recessions, you know, you see that V shape essentially. Um, just because businesses are allowed to operate doesn't necessarily mean that they're gonna come back one hundred percent the next day. And so i- it's, it's gonna have to be um, some assistance right now in the short term, but there also needs to be some planning um, and some assistance in the long term that we're gonna have to, have to look towards to help our businesses.
How quickly do you think you could, you could get strategy four off the runway? Which is the one-on-one discussions with shopping center property managers and owners to create strategy center by center?
We, we can do that um, a- as soon as possible. However, the, the question is gonna be, what are we solving for? Are we deferring rent for one year? Um, what are, where's the bottom here? That, that's the variable that everybody is, is asking. Um, a- and we can do some projections, right? Um, we can definitely start that discussion, which I, I believe that that's one of the things we need to prioritize. We need to jump on that right away. And I think that we can develop a short-term strategy based on what we know today to provide some assistance to those businesses, and I would recommend that we do that. Um, but there's still gonna be kind of this long-term recovery strategy that we just need to know that variable, how quickly do we anticipate that certain segments or sec- or sectors of our, of our economy, or retail businesses are gonna recover?
And yeah, but I think, uh, I mean, even if we uh, don't know how long it's gonna last, if we could find some short-term
Yep.
solutions to buy time, right? I mean,
Absolutely.
We're not really sure how the Heels Act or the Heroes Act is gonna play out if
Absolutely.
and when. Is, is there another round of PPP coming? We don't know. Um, and so, you know, maybe just in the near term, I think so many of these things just require something that's very difficult um, to do, which is to make the, you know, decisions and implement them very quickly at, at the city level, right? You know, uh, the time is of the essence, right? And we've been uh, you know, implementing different things throughout this, you know, pandemic. Like, you know, I'm sure you could probably rattle off, Dante, you know, what, what we've been doing from the start, you know, here. Um, okay, I'll, I'll come back with some more questions coming here with the fellow council members have to say. Thanks.
Uh, yes, Councilmember Fruman?
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Vanessa, for the report. It was, it was a in- interesting read this morning. Um, I did want to give you a couple pieces of information. Um, on Mar- in Marlin Cove, you had mentioned in the report that Focus and USSD were closed. Um, I've been seeing in the Islander USSD doing classes at the OSH property. I'm not sure if that's still going on or those are old pictures. And I had an appointment at Focus last week, so I know that they're open. Um, just for information. Um, as I was looking through, I really appreciated the strategies. Um, it's interesting because I would start to read and then I'd start to write notes, and then I would read what you wrote next, and it was, and it matched. Uh, there's a lot of, of, of things that we can do here. I was really concerned that, as I read, we got a better response from our retailers than we did from our landlords and uh, management companies. And I think the fastest way to get a management company or a landlord to come to the table and start talking, just talking, is, you know, the council's deciding on whether they want to consid- consider a commercial eviction moratorium. So we'd like to engage you in some discussion. You know what? When you start talking about that, I think they come to the table. And I think what we want to accomplish is getting them there to understand what the issues are with their tenants. And on the flip side, we cannot lose sight of the fact that the, the owners have financial obligations as well, and that's the really difficult part here. And that's why I, I thoroughly agree with the idea of each individual property being looked at differently. Because the newer properties, the properties that have been held by their owners the shortest amount of time, probably have the highest amount of costs, so they probably have less room to, to mess a little bit than those that have been holding properties for a long time, probably have a little bit more room to be um,
than those that have been holding properties for a long time, probably have a little bit more room to be helpful to their tenants. And most, you would think that most property owners, landlords, would appreciate the fact of keeping their tenants in place. You know, I had recent discussions with the Apartment, California Apartment Association, and that's what they were talking about, even with these, with the issues that they're facing similar to the commercial end. It's in their best interest to keep their tenants in place because they don't have to do renovations and things to get the next tenant in. It's disconcerting that our, our landlords and property owners and property managers aren't coming forward. That, I think, is our very first step that we really need to get accomplished. And if it's, hey, we're talking about a moratorium, is, is that what gets them to the table? Then let's do it. As much as we need our property owners to understand the plight and the in, issues faced by the retailers, the retailers really need to understand the plight faced by the property owners. It's not in the, the renter's best interest to have the property foreclosed upon. Because if the property is foreclosed upon, it's sold again probably at a higher price, which means they have higher costs, which means rents go up. So equally, it's, it's not as good for them to, to see that happen. So there really needs to be some movement on both sides to see if we can find something that works for both. I, I know that we've been discussing and we were expecting to hear something about a loan program in the next couple meetings. And I must be honest, with, with the outlook and what we're hearing from some of the retail businesses and the closures that we're seeing, I'm concerned about the level of risk that we will be taking with the community's money on, on doing a program like that. You know, when we, you give out $10,000, and I don't know, I haven't looked at the, at the lists. I'm, I'm not sure if the businesses that have closed were on that $10,000 grant list or not. And we knew going into it that $10,000 wasn't going to keep them open forever. And it was a hope that we could extend it. But we knew we were giving away money. If it's a loan program, the anticipation behind is that we're getting our money back, even if it's a low interest or no interest. So I'm, I'm a little concerned there. I, I, I believe we need to help, but we also need to protect our, our citizens' money. Like I said before, I had recent discussions with the California Apartment Association, who were very willing to get involved to help mediate issues between landlords and tenants. We have one going on at one of our apartment complexes in construction, and, and they're willing to step in and do that. This is, again, new to me. I don't know if we have an entity like that for a property management association of California, something that has a similar interest for their owners and, and management companies, that they'd be willing to come in and help with this situation we're talking about. They know both sides of it. They'd be perfect people to step in and help. And finally, I would recommend against providing or recommending resources regarding litigation. Litigation, and I know I'm talking to a lawyer, and litigation is not the best answer here. This is a very difficult situation where there's very little wiggle room on both sides. And my concern is the only person who's going to make money in that deal is the attorney. And the businesses we're trying to help aren't necessarily going to improve their situation doing it that way. I think we're much better off in a mediation type of situation, conflict resolution, those types of environments, to really help both sides. I'm sorry to take, take away your business, but, but I really believe that. This, this isn't the time for that. So just my opinion.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with all the comments that are made. I mean, this, these are dire times, and we have to figure out, think outside the box. I like the suggestions, Vanessa, in your report. And I think maybe we should dig down a little bit deeper in, in some of those suggestions and, and come up with a plan, something we can help our businesses. Now, I, I agree with Councilmember Fruman. We also have to look at the landlord side. I mean, they're, they're facing challenges as well. And if they don't get their, the rent, they can't pay their bills. So if, if their property does go on foreclosure, it just leads to an, another pile of issues. So, so I agree with that. We have to put emphasis on both sides of the issue. So I think that's really important for us to keep in mind. So where we go from here is I would suggest that we dig down deeper on some of these recommendations that were made and come up with a plan to attack it on one, by, through one of those recommendations and see what we can do.
And, and, and our intent is definitely, the first is the conversation. I, I just want to clarify a couple of things. We, we are in contact and we have talked to all of the shopping centers. I think for the most part, we're really talking about two of our shopping centers that the tenants have complaints and concerns about how their leases are being renegotiated or, or have a vacancy issue. And we have talked to them, but their account of what's going on and, and their analysis is different from the tenants. And so we've had to listen to both. I don't think we're going to have a, a problem in engaging them in a discussion. And like I said, we need to do that right away. We need to work and engage some of our partners like the Chamber to do those things for a short, short-term solution. We can, we can engage them in, in conflict resolution and, and, you know, have someone come in to talk a, a little bit about resolving some of the issues and, and negotiating the lease. I think that's where we start, but ultimately, it's, it's going to come down to how do you make it equitable for both sides? And the only way you do that is with money. And, and that's, that's kind of the struggle. So we'll come back with a short-term plan to see if that's acceptable to the, the City Council. We'll meet with the Subcommittee for Sustainability, Sustainable Economic Development, and come back with some recommendations. The second part related to the, the loan program, the terms are, are going to be coming to the City Council on the 28th. And the recommendations from the Subcommittee are to actually require some type of personal guarantee so that the loans are secured. It'll be very difficult for someone to just walk away and we not recoup the money. And we also need to consider, there are some businesses where a loan is not attractive. It's not something they can consider just because they're already in debt. So it's only going to be attractive to certain segments of, of the community. But at our next meeting, we're going to talk about the loan program and the terms. And we'll also talk about what is our short-term strategy to act upon some of the recommendations?
If I may make another suggestion, one end of it that I'm hearing a lot about is we need customers. So maybe we can look at how we might be able to promote the businesses a little bit more to our own residents. A lot of residents are still really leery about going out and eating outside. I'm one of them. Because it is a concern. I mean, this is a serious issue, and it is a concern. So I don't know how we might go about promoting that it's safe, but maybe a, some kind of a city promotion video showing them working in the restaurant with masks and gloves, or, I mean...
Vanessa, do you want to talk a little bit about your discussion with the Chamber and others about that, about promotion?
Sure. And specifically about the promoting to residents, and that was something that the Chamber is currently working on with their Living Local campaign. The, I, I do see that there's a lot of opportunity for the city to partner with the Chamber on that, on their promotion. Because they, they also see that the residents are a, sort of, that, that untapped potential of customers for Foster City businesses. And I think that, that's one of the recommend, that's where we'll be coming back in the short term to bring some recommendations where we can partner with the Chamber on their Living Local promotion and their Living Local campaign in terms of not just Stamp Me, but also some of the things that the city has been doing with their Get It Here Support Local campaign. So I think that there's, there's a lot of opportunity there.
Okay, great. Thank you. I look forward to that report.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Wasi.
Just really quickly, so Dante, do you have any initial ideas on how to increase the number of businesses for Stamp Me? And any challenges that you have heard with, from businesses' standpoint? Because that's a great, and as I've shared with you, that's a great program that not only helps the residents, but the businesses also. How do we increase the businesses?
Do you have any comments on that? I know you've been doing a lot of the heavy lifting.
I, I do. I, I think the biggest challenge for most of the businesses is just understanding the technology. It's, if I can spend time with the business, it's a little bit more challenging because of COVID-19. But recently I signed up, for example, Retha Indian Restaurant over at Edgewater. It just took a little bit of me going over there, sitting down with them, explaining the program. It's just, it's a lot of one-on-one, putting in the time to talk with them, to, to do the legwork. Because really, it's just making sure that they understand how the app works, how the, the redemptions work, how they get reimbursed, all of that before they sign up. That's the key. Because we want to make sure that there's, there's not a lot of pressure on the businesses to do a lot of the administrative piece. That's where the city comes in. So it's doing a lot of that front-loading.
We're trying to actually do that, but there's a little bit of a reluctance with some of the smaller businesses that are leery about the technology. You know, like Vanessa said, when, how long is it going to take us to get reimbursed? And just a little bit of reluctance in, in adopting the technology. But we're, we're definitely out there trying to sign up more businesses.
So we have been, we have been in this program for several months now. So I would also encourage, not that the staff hasn't done that yet, but to look at how to simplify the experience. Are there any opportunities, which is, I think what you're saying, Dante, are there any opportunities in simplifying? Because in the world that we are in, in the digital world that we are in, people's expectations are to get things done just by a swipe or a click, right?
Yes.
So...
Literally what they have to do. And we've made it as simple as possible. But again, some businesses are just a little reluctant to adopt. All they have to do is take their phone and, you know, and, and then there's a backend administration that's pretty simple, too. Literally, the, the issuer problem is just kind of a reluctance to adopt new technology.
Yes, and I'm not criticizing by any means, just to be very clear, not blaming anything.
I didn't think it as a criticism.
Thank you, Dante, because I, this is my day job, to simplify digital user experience. So I, I take it with, with that perspective in mind. And on that note, I would also like to mention as we, as we are talking about thinking out of the box on how we can help businesses, an area of opportunity that we need to think about is paying a close attention to how the business models are changing in today's world. And while there are less opportunities for some businesses, there are startups coming up with more opportunities in a different, in a different area, or maybe it's more digital, et cetera. So our world is changing. The market forces are playing a role. And what our role would be and should be is to evaluate that, stay on top of that, and try to take advantage of that from the standpoint of economic development for Foster City. And I'm happy to discuss more offline on that one. I know today we're running out of time. But just, just wanted to mention that, to, to think from the standpoint of how, like, for example, you know, retail, we saw retail going away, Amazon, Amazon eating everyone's lunches. The business model shifted, and we were struggling to get retail businesses in Foster City, and that wasn't happening. There could be other reasons, too. Similar to that, the nature, the market forces and the nature of business, change, shift in business models could pose an opportunity for Foster City. And what that would be to do an exploration from economic development standpoint, I think, would be a good idea.
Okay, we're running a little bit long here, so. Councilmember Hindi, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I do, I do have a comment, and I think to Vanessa and to staff. While we're looking at promotional opportunities with the Chamber and marketing to drive businesses to our community, and the mayor had mentioned there are members of our community who are concerned and will not, do not feel safe to come out to those retail establishments. I think one way we could address this is, first of all, need to, in our messaging, need to make it clear to our residents that without your support, these businesses that you love and you want to be in this community are going to be closing their doors. So you have the responsibility to support them and be their customers, especially in these times. They might not be perfect. And, and good days, and good times, you don't have to come to them. But in these times, they're not perfect. None of us are perfect. You need to be their customer. They depend on you. And for those who don't want to come out, buy a gift card from that business. Use it later when, when it is safe for you. Buy $100, buy $200 of gift cards that you could use. Take your family out to dinner when the time is right. So we have a role as a community, residents. You want to see, we talk about economic development all the time. We talk about, we want to see diversity of businesses. We talk about, we want to see diversity of restaurants. Great, they could come here, but especially now, because in the past, before pre, pre-COVID, they kind of had a wider client base. They had our daytime population, which is the employees, and they had our nighttime population, which is our residents. But the daytime is gone for the most part now. So we have to carry that weight, otherwise these businesses cannot keep their doors open. It's plain and simple. So if you want to see these businesses survive and remain in Foster City, if you are able, because of course, some of us are being challenged. We can barely make our hands meet ourselves. So I understand that, but those who are able, I think, should, and as part of the messaging, that should be clear that they depend on you. Help them. And if you're not safe, again, buy gift cards, buy certificates for future use.
So I think if, if we, we can finish the conversation, and we're going to be getting more information anyway on these recommendations, right, Dante?
They will. Bring, bring a short-term strategy and elements for a long-term strategy.
Okay, that would be great. So you need a motion from us to, or you have enough pro?
No, I, I, I don't need anything. I, I think we have sufficient direction.
Okay, okay. Sounds good. Then let's move on because we have another meaty subject right here before we have to go to the closed session. So let's go on to the next, the next item.
Item 10, Resolutions for Adoption, 10.1, Consideration of Structural Deficit Remediation Strategy for Fiscal Year 2020-2021, Quarter One. Anyone who wants to provide public comment, please raise your hand during this time, and we'll call on you after the staff report.
Thank you. Staff report, please.
Yes, and let me just share my screen with, with the Council. I'm sorry, let me just... So I, I, I don't have a long presentation, but I wanted to basically provide our City Council with a little bit of an update on the strategy related to the budget. We provided our, our last kind of assessment at the end of the year. I'm sorry, the last fiscal year. And we also provided some information to help us to balance the budget for fiscal year 2021, which is the current fiscal year that, that we're... Balance the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, which is the current fiscal year that, that we're in. But I wanted to kind of. Talk a little bit about some of the things that we consider. One of the, the main things is. We really needed to slow money going out the door. To really take our time to really understand the impacts that, that are happening. I think some cities that were not in. As good of a financial position as Foster City. Had to take more drastic measures by. Eliminating staff positions, laying people off, cutting a lot of programs. But essentially, what we recommended to city council is let's slow down our expenditures. Let's take the next six to eighteen months to really understand where the bottom of this is, where the trends are. And we would come back to our city council and provide frequent updates. One of the things that we wanted to make clear is. I know that there were, were some questions and. A few desires to come back more frequently and quicker. In reality, we do not have a, a sense. Of what the, if our assumptions hold for. Probably two, three to four months, essentially. That's why we come to you with our quarterly updates. But it's based on the information that we're able to confirm. From the last quarter and we've been able, been able to reconcile that. So coming back to the city council on a monthly basis wouldn't really do any good. Because we wouldn't have anything different to talk to you about. And so what we're, we're looking to do is to evaluate this. We've already solved for the next fiscal year, I'm sorry, for this current fiscal year. What we're working on now is really solving the structural deficit. And like it says, every city is unique. So, you know, we don't have the strategy, like I said, like the city of Monterey. Who had to lay off forty or fifty positions. We believe that we need to be a little bit more thoughtful about how we resolve. And so within the forecast and, and the different things that. We made assumptions or recommendations to you about, we considered. You know, what is, how long is this going to last? We were conservative about projecting revenue losses or shortfalls out into the future. And how long potentially would it take us to cure the structural deficit? And so that's what we kind of focused in on. But I, I, I want to just reiterate that there's, there's no one answer here. There are a lot of. Things that we need to consider. But now is not the time to panic and, and, and now it's, I would reiterate that and. And, and say that to the community and, and impress upon the council. That now is not the time to panic, based on our projections. We have solved or balanced the budget for twenty-one or for twenty twenty-one. We're working on our structural deficit for the out years. And that's what we're trying to refine here. The. And I'll go into, a little bit more into how we're trying to do that. And the tools that we are going to be using to really meet whatever. Adjusted assumption or shortfall that comes up in the next couple of years. So as you recall. We, we did this at the start of, of the budget year. We asked for six months of savings essentially. And we deferred some CIPs that were non-critical. To future years, and so we were able to slow or defer about three point seven million. And again, it was made up of, of all of those things, travel, freeze, training reduction. And the like, and we were able to balance the budget doing that. And we set up a process basically, and the goal of this. Strategy to cure the structural deficit. Was really one where we can factor in some of the uncertainty, right? We, we are very conservative with our projections. We wanted to develop the budget reduction strategy that addressed the structural deficit. We wanted to also establish a budget reduction toolbox. That can expand and contract based on the need. And we'll be able to provide analysis as we move forward. For city council and be able to take a look. In our toolbox to see what's needed to cure the structural deficit. And then we wanted to take a look at our organization for the long-term health. And, and really that is an opportunity that not many organizations get. To really look at the efficiency of the organization. A lot of times when people are in, organizations are in crisis, they just think cut. We're thinking reduce expenditures, but also while we're doing that. Are there ways to make our organization more efficient for the future? By using technology, by utilizing resources, staff resources in other departments or other places. To shore up areas where we're weak. The other thing that we set as our criteria was. We wanted to make sure that the, there were minimal impacts to essential services. I think we kind of talked a little bit about our core services and the nice-to-haves. And we'll talk a little bit more about that in our, our next slide. We also wanted to limit the impact to existing employees. We believe that we are a service-based organization and our resource are employees. There's a certain level of service that I think our community deserves and expects. And we wanted to see what we can do to weather the storm. And retain levels of service and also employees. Now, I'm going to talk a little bit more about that if, for instance. COVID and the restrictions of, of the emergency. Don't allow us to open certain facilities. And we have staff that are staff to do those functions. Then I, I, I'm not sure that we can make the case for. Continuing to put those resources in a place where we cannot. Perform the function that those employees were, were, were charged to do. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. We also wanted to look at non-general funds to supplement ongoing activities. Grants, you know, are, are there resources from other places? Where we can still maintain our level of service and pay for some of those nice-to-haves by not using our money. And we also wanted to reduce our general fund contribution. For, for non-essential projects. We're not going to defer maintenance, we're not going to do things to reduce. Our pavement score, we're not going to do things that, that. Are in conflict with the standards of maintaining good infrastructure. But there are some nice, nice-to-have things that maybe if we were, were to resequence those. We could weather the storm. And still maintain the level of service that the community expects and. Deserves. So our. Our, our refinement started with a discussion with our community or with our department heads. And I think in the recommendations for the staff report. Are the recommendations from the departments. We, we tasked the departments with identifying savings. In their departments. But as they identified the savings, we, we, we put, we held up the criteria. We don't want to take away essential services. We don't want to, if we don't have to, eliminate any staff for, for essential things. And we asked them to really take a look at the three categories, core services. Enhanced support services and then nice-to-haves. And we developed a toolbox. Of those things and then. We are, we are able to utilize those things as we get more information about the severity of the economic downturn. For example, one of the things that we did, we did an analysis of our Bears program. The city of Foster City actually hosts a database for compensation and classification. That is used by, I believe it's, it's cities in California, so they can buy a subscription. And we actually managed that, you know, we get a fee essentially. We were faced with a situation where we saw. That it was trending down essentially in terms of. What we generated from revenue and fees from other cities into the program. And what the future cost to maintain that program would be. And it was, it was clear through the analysis that pretty soon we're going to be running into a deficit. And partially subsidizing that program. So as a business decision. We made the decision to make the recommendation that we terminate that program. And there was a general fund reserve. We asked, you know, is this our money? Does it belong? Yes, it, it, it is our money. And so we were able to utilize that six hundred and forty thousand dollars. Get out of the program, administering the program, somebody else take it. And, and get out of that obligation, but still utilize that one, one-time six hundred and forty thousand to. Resolve some of our, our fiscal issues. And so these are the refinement kind of efforts that. We, we asked the department heads and so what you'll see in the listing. Identified, we eliminated duplication of services and, and that's what we're going to, going to. Refine our assessment, we're going to look for other ways to do things for less. But not compromise the efficiency and in some respects be a little bit more efficient. The, the budget reduction strategy toolbox to cure the structural deficit. These are a list of the other things, these are kind of the major things that we're looking at. You know, I, I already talked to, to you and we, we, we talked to the city council about. Strategies to generate revenue. Where they exist and we will be having a, a future discussion with our city council. We talked about the Bears program. One of the major things where we're looking to. Add to this list to cure our structural deficit is the labor MOU negotiations. We've had some good discussions with our bargaining units. But is, are there ways for us to negotiate some savings to help with our structural deficit? And that's part of our strategy. We've included an internal service fund holiday, especially with our. With our IRF fund, our, our, our fund that each year we, we contribute to, to pay for. Things that, that we would have to save up for that everybody uses, for instance, computers. I think, so, so each year we make a contribution from the general fund to the IRF fund. To pay for replacement of, of computers and copiers and, and things like that. It, it just so happens that this one year, we had a surplus. And we're able to utilize that surplus to cure, help cure our problem. Without compromising our future commitments. So we're able to take a, a, a holiday. But continue next year with that same contribution. And not compromise our ability to purchase what we need for, for the future. We're going to be looking at some savings through attrition. Some of the recommendations from the different department heads were, hey. There is this, this person or maybe this position is a limited-term position. We need to look at how we structure that. To experience some savings, but also be efficient. There are some people that have maybe expressed that they're looking at retirement. I mean, we, we need to take a look at that once we confirm that that's actually the case. Department, departmental reductions are something that we're taking a look at. I forwarded a memo to you from the fire district and I think our fire chief is actually. On the line that talks about a fire district rebate. And, and you'll, you'll see the details of that, but it's estimated to be approximately two hundred thousand dollars. That would be. Savings from the fourth quarter based on what they did to really reduce their costs. And they're sharing that, a portion of that with the member agencies on the sixty twenty twenty split. And then kind of the COVID, COVID impact reimbursement. I wanted our, our finance director to kind of chime in a little bit. But I, I want to be crystal clear with what we're asking for tonight. We're, we're asking to kind of pin down. The things that, that we have identified in the current year. For this budget reduction, you know, those are, that's the Bears information. Those, that's the rate holiday to kind of cure some of the, the, the expenses that we have listed. Under, under that, that element and secondly. We want to approve the appropriation adjustment for twenty twenty-one. And, and that's just the, the formality that we need to do in terms of, of the adjustment. The, the toolbox, if you see the sheet that we've included in the report. The future years are, are ideas. And, and suggestions that we would just like to have comments on. We are not asking you to approve or implement anything beyond the twenty twenty-one year. And so I, I'd like our, our finance director to, to have a few comments. And then we'll turn it over to our city council and, and the community for comments and clarification. So Edmund?
Thank you, interim city manager Hall. So to, you know, add, add additional information to Dante's presentation. As, as we look at each quarter and, and providing, and to provide city council updates. You know, we're going to be, you know, probing into various elements of our budget, you know, in this particular quarter. You know, we identify some one-time transfers from two funds. IRF, as Dante indicated, that's the replacement fund. And also, you know, the determination of the Bears program. So that's one-time revenues of a million and forty thousand dollars in aggregate. And then there on the expenditure side, you know, there are a couple of departments that have. Additional reductions that we can take advantage of this current fiscal year. Obviously, the city manager department, there's, there's that vacancy, right? We were recruiting for the city manager's office or, or manager. But, you know, we're assuming that it'll take about six months to complete that recruitment. Meanwhile, there are salary savings, so want to take that into consideration as part of the Q1 update. Now, there are some expenditures that were, you're, we're tapping into these savings. You know, and, and they're identified specifically in this staff report. And then other departments that have provided some adjustments include the, the public works department, a little bit of that. Because we did some reassignment of staff. And then we have community development that is looking into. A classification change in terms of their staff, that will save some money. And then last but not least, parks and recreation, because of the nature of their operations. Obviously, the recreation center is essentially closed. And, you know, there's, there's labor costs, right? There's part. And you know, there's, there's labor costs, right? There's part-time labor associated with it. And when the building is essentially closed, you really don't need, you know, a part-time building attendance um to basically. Uh, be present uh when there are events going on or classes going on. And, and to shut down the building, so to speak. So those are kind of the natural savings that come along with, if I may. You know, the, the lo- revenue loss and the, and the activity loss, so to speak, associated with that. So, you know, the, and the expenditure side, we're looking at about two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars in total savings. And again, that is offset by the loss of revenues that you, you see and also in the staff report. So that's, that's not insignificant. So all those things bundled up. You know, give us, do give us a small adjustment into uh the deficit, you know, um. It, it's a small dent, but there are things that we're already thinking ahead of, right? We're lo- already looking at Q two, uh, other opportunities in Q two, as Dante indicated. We're in the process of finalizing our labor negotiations and hopefully that will yield some savings for the city. Uh, because the assumptions that we have on the budget is that it's two percent wage increase uh for, you know, all, all cities. I mean, all cities, all staff, uh, all labor unit, units. Um, so if, if uh at the conclusion of the negotiations and something less than two percent. Then we'll, we'll realize some savings. Um, CIP, so Dante indicated that's something that we're working on. We want to, you know, refine CIP and see what are really the needed uh projects. Are there things that we can defer? Are there, there are things that we can eliminate? Are there things that we can reduce? Uh, in terms of CIP and tho- those will help. What you uh did tonight in terms of approving the agreements for the sports groups, that helps the CIP. Because those monies were not accounted for uh in our CIP program. We, we didn't know when we were gonna receive money. So now that we have that in place, we could start estimating uh revenues that come back and restore the city CIP fund. Because after all, the C cloud project, they were paid by parking lot fees. And the rest of it was paid by, you know, general fund contribution to the city, city CIP. So as we uh recover some of that money from the sports groups, that will help, you know, uh, increase the, the revenue level. And the fund balance for the city's CIP. Uh, and, and another item that we're looking at, besides looking at Earth, we're gonna look at other internal service funds for savings opportunities. And if we can reduce uh internal service fund costs, that will translate into a smaller contribution. From the general fund, because after all, internal service funds uh recover their costs. Through charges to various departments, including the city fund, uh, in- including general fund and also enterprise funds. But that portion that's charged to the general fund, if we're able to reduce the internal service fund program costs. Uh, we actually realize savings also in the general fund. So tho- those are some of the things that we're, we're thinking about. Besides what Dante indicated uh in, in the staff report, which is attachment number three. That talks about kind of the future in terms of, you know, some of the potential uh reductions. That we see on a longer term basis. But in terms of the resolution, that's bef- the two resolutions that's before you, it's really adjusting the current year's budget. Because a- as the city council knows, we adopt budget on an annual basis and the rest of it are revenue projections. But the goal uh at the end of the day is to solve the long-term structural deficit, which, which um. You know, um interim city Hall is committed to doing.
And so the, I'm sorry, go ahead, Edmund.
No, that, that was it, Dante. That was the conclusion of my report.
And, and so the last thing I will say, um, we've gotten questions about, well, why don't, why don't we push this quicker, Dante? And, and why, why are we um um taking our time to? You think about um how we're gonna cure the structural deficit? I- in reality, um, we're in our natural budget process right now. And we, we've started our budget process for the twenty-one um twenty-two fiscal year. And the, the five-year financial plan. This is the time that we would be talking about this stuff. There's an opportunity here to utilize this um crisis. Not only to cure the structural deficit, um, but also to, to make ourselves uh more efficient. There's an opportunity here um to look at ways um in which we can provide. Uh, the same level or higher level of service to our community. Um, but make sure we, we continue to be a well-managed, you know, from, from a fiscal standpoint. A well-managed city. Um, and we will be coming back in future quarters to provide updates. If there's a need to take action uh more quickly than that, we will come back more often than that. Um, but that's our commitment and, and that's would be our recommendation. Um, so we'll, we'll turn it back over to you, mayor, uh, for comments um and direction.
Thank you. Um, do we have any raised hands? Do we have any public comments on this? Rob?
I do not see any.
Okay, so comments from the council and I can't see everybody all at once on my screen, so.
I'm sorry, let me uh, do I need to stop sharing mine?
Yeah, that would be good.
Let me see, how do I do that? Let me see, just a second, okay.
Okay, now I can see everybody. Thank you. So any comments, questions from the council on this? Yes, council member Hindi.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Dante and Edmund for the staff report. Uh, question that I have, when we're talking about, obviously, most of it kind of. Centered around not jeopardizing the level of service to our community and focusing on essential services. Is that correct? What, that's basically what, how staff approach?
Yes.
So do you see, my question is, do you see what is considered essential services? Pre-COVID is different than post-COVID or during COVID?
No.
Has anything, is that, everything remained the same?
Yes.
What do you see? So essential, are we defining essential as um value-based, need-based? Are we talking about uh police, fire, uh, public work? How, how, how are we defining essential in these times?
So we, we, we did an exercise with the departments. Um, and we talked about essential services and those were things that um took care of the health. And safety um of our community, the things that were mandated to do. Um, the things that um we should take care of from a liabilities standpoint. Now, that's just the basic layer of, um, I believe cities are in place to do the things. That residents cannot do for themselves. That's the very basic level. We have some enhanced services, still important. Um, I asked the department heads to also identify those. And the last was, these are really, really nice to have kinds of things. Um, and some of them are important to the community and some are not.
Well, I, I have to tell you, I, I appreciate the effort that, that staff is putting into this. As far as specifically for me is critical or important, not critical, what important is. To have, to explore raise of more efficiency on delivering the services what we delivered today and we have delivered in the past. So that's always critical, uh, there's always room for improvement and if we could find those even moving forward, post-COVID. That, I think that would be a great practice to do, if you're able to be more efficient and leverage technology or other means to get to that point. Um, the, the, just to be clear, my final question at this point and then I might come back. We only talking now about this twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget. That's all the only measure that we will be, our uh resolution today, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And, and, and we're, we're putting out um some of the things in the toolbox. And um if council has comments about those, we're willing to hear that today too. But we're really talking about only approving uh what's proposed for twenty twenty-one.
So let me talk then, since you mentioned that, let me talk about the toolbox a little bit. But it does say, one of the things on it, let me look at there, it says like enhanced revenue or something along those lines. Let me get the proper wording on it. The first item I think was, yeah, enhancing revenue. So how do you, what do you, what staff see as a way of enhancing revenue during this time at least?
So, so the enhanced revenue, I think that's referring, I'm sorry, let me pull up the staff report. That is more of a longer-term strategy. Um, I, I think if, if you can go to. Um, I'm sorry, I opened the wrong one. Enhanced revenue um are things like taking a look at the hotel tax. Um, obviously, we wouldn't, we wouldn't, um. We couldn't actually im- impose anything or, or take that to the ballot for two years. But that's a discussion that we need to have um to help resolve kind of the long-term measures. There are issues, for instance, that we're gonna be coming back to our city council very soon to talk about special events. Um, are there ways to um recoup the services that we provide for special events? Um, in a way that's fair and equitable for everyone, that's, that's additional revenue. Are there services that we normally provide um that we, we need to really refine and look at? Are we, are we still subsidizing this service? Um, should we be looking at additional things? Um, so when we talk about revenue generation, I don't think that there's anything on the list that we're talking about. Implementing in twenty twenty-one, um, but that's something that we're gonna be looking at through this budget process. And recommending for the long-term stretch.
Okay, so this is, uh, so then I'm, I'm guessing, correct me if I'm wrong, that is with the assumption that. We pass COVID, not only we pass COVID, uh, the economic environment has gotten back to where it was. Pre-COVID and then you start seeing these kind of activities.
Correct.
Typically such as, you know, the tourism industry and the travel industry and all that kind of sense, so.
Right.
Uh, even when COVID is over, these industries are not gonna be back to hundred percent overnight. It's gonna take some time to recoup and recover. So we're talking years down the line of potentially having opportunities. Such as stated for enhanced revenue. And if we're talking about recouping our cost of special events, I understand it's, it is. Getting basically reducing the subsidy, but I wouldn't call it a revenue. I would call it as. Recovering some of your subsidy, right? Or as revenue, I would imagine it would be different, but that's maybe my interpretation of it. So other than the hotel, how do, how does staff, and you don't have to answer me now, I'm just, you know, thinking this. Down the line is what other measures of enhanced revenue that we could really utilize? Obviously, you wanna have that economic development that we want and we wanna have perhaps. And that, and, and, and like, all this discussion really is. Honestly, has to be looked at holistically as what is it that the city, say we post-COVID, what is the city needs? What is it what we could provide amenities? Where can we provide those amenities in the city? And how we could have vibrancy in our community? So I, I see those are opportunities for new and enhanced revenues, right? And uh, but those, you're talking about a holistic look at the entire city. Identifying what are the needs of the community, what kind of amenities we need and what amenities will be used. Thus generating this vibrancy and economic development and those revenues that we're after.
That's, that's very true. Um, you know, as you look at the redevelopment of properties. Um, i- if that were to become a, 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 a reality, um, there would be a reassessment. And there will be an in- increase in property tax that the city would, would, would take a look at or, or would, would uh receive. But I agree with you one hundred percent, um, and that's exactly why we need this budget cycle. To refine some of those recommendations and, and discuss that with city council for how to move forward with those.
Okay, thank you, Dante. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody else? Uh, I see council member Freeman's hand up.
Thank you. Just a real quick question that came up as you mentioned the reassessment, Dante. Um, with our discussion on ADUs, um, would the addition of an ADU on a property trigger a reassessment? Isn't there something that there's a certain amount of development or something that triggers that?
I don't know the answer to that, uh, Kai or Marlene.
I have a little bit of information on that. Uh, there is a, a reassessment, but it's not the same as a normal property reassessment. So normally with a normal property reassessment, you would have the whole property reassessed. Here, it's just taking the value of the, the ADU itself and adding it on to your assessment. So there is an increase, but it's not as drastic as it would be uh if you did say in addition to your home.
So lots of help. All right. Thank you, Kai. Um, I guess the comments I would have is uh. I think it's been made clear, the uh, the funds that we're saving from Park and Rec really are a direct result of the buildings and the things that we can't do right now. There's no point in having employees sitting around, um, so you, you draw back, dial back those hours. And I did have a conversation with Dante today, cause the concern would be, well, as things turn around, how quickly can we recover? That's what businesses want to do, that's what we want to do. And um because we have the policy about rehiring uh people that we've had to lay off. That we should be able to rehire and be back in business in, in a week or two. Uh, of getting these people back on board and getting things moving. So I think that those, those discussions or those recommendations regarding Park and Rec makes sense to me for this year. Um. The same thing would go for things in future years as we're looking at cuts in program, cuts in, in employees. Um, if it's a temporary thing based on the fact that we can't do something, I think we need to really look at. How long will it take to recover that position, to recover that service or program is important? And we really need to understand when we're looking at these spreadsheets of savings. Um, the descriptions on the far right column are fairly generic. As to, you know, we're cutting a, a, an employee or we're reclassifying a position, what does that mean to service to the public? What is that? How does that change what the public will see is, is important? Uh, prioritizing those items so that you know that if we're looking at, or we all know really. If we're looking at next year's budget and we're seeing a deficit of nine hundred thousand, let's say. We start going down the list of priorities until we hit nine hundred thousand. And at some point, we may find it reasonable, like we did this year. That at some point in that list, we put in use of reserves or at this point, we're willing to use a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand of reserves. Before we move to the next cut item. Um, that will help us to, to maneuver through the budget discussion next year. Um, the other thing I think is important, uh, Dante, you mentioned about the speed with which we move and uh what we're doing. And I think it's really important to understand that the, the income that comes into the city, some income, primarily the really big ones. Come in at a couple of times during the year and so there really isn't an effect in the first couple of months of the year. Um, so I, I think it's really important that we don't jump to making decisions that can impact services. Based on one or two months of how we're doing, unless it's really, really dramatic. Um, we ought to see a trend in things before we, we know what we're gonna do. But we wait for that trend to see if we really need to, to turn that dial or, or whatever we need to do to uh respond. Um, and remember, I personally, I mentioned it to Dante today, I would have never classified this as a quarter one report. I would have qu- record, classified this as a budget update, because we haven't even finished quarter one. And uh making a decision based on quarter one assessments shouldn't really be done till the. Um, I think earliest would be the end of October, it gives us a chance to see what comes in July, August and September. To make an assessment of how that really uh compares to the year prior at that time. How much are we off? And see how that compares with the projections that staff has made for uh revenues. So as, as Dante said, I think we're, we're in a very good position. We don't need to call special meetings to respond and, and make these cuts. We've got some, we've got a cushion to help us and other cities don't. Um, but even despite that, we, we've made conservative estimates on our, on our income. And now we just need to sit a little bit and see. And now we just need to sit a little bit and see how does that income really compare? Um, actually compared to what we, we estimated. And we really haven't given enough time, it's not even two months. So I, I caution us to be cautious and, um, reasonable and, uh, patient as we, as we look at these things.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ghani.
Thank you, Mayor Mahonpour, uh, City Manager Hall and Director Suyan. Thank you so much for, uh, the thoughtful analysis, uh, and the strategies that you're proposing in your toolbox to take care of our finances for an extended period of time, not just right now, but, uh, taking the long review. But before I get to my comments, I'd like to ask a quick question of, uh, Director Suyan. Uh, is there any debt that we have that could be restructured at this time?
Uh, the debt that we have is the most recent debt, uh, and I'm talking only about the general fund because we, we actually have two recent debts. One is about a year ago, and that's for the wastewater treatment plant. But that's, that's the wastewater enterprise, right? So wastewater enterprise is self-sufficient in the sense that it raises revenues through rates. Uh, the other, um, that obviously is the, um, is the, uh, geo-bonds, right? That we just issued for the levy project, which we're gonna be, you know, obviously starting, uh, quite soon. And so that's reflective of current, uh, interest rate and market conditions. So a, 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 a good point that you bring up, Vice Mayor, but, um, you know, uh, but that's something that we will keep in mind. One, one thing to be also maybe aware of, uh, in terms of our geo-bonds, there's not an opportunity to, uh, quote unquote, refinance that because there's actually a seven-year call date. Um, so I, I think it's seven, I, I could be mistaken, it's either seven and eight, that escapes me, I apologize. So we, we don't have ability to refund those bonds, uh, until that time period has expired and that that was the structure of the bond deal. So, uh, but certainly an important element of it, there are many cities who are, uh, in a situation where they can refund these bonds and they're, they're definitely taking, uh, advantage of the lower interest rates.
Thank you. Uh, with regards to my comments, I think as you start to take a look at what's happening around us and what's happening to other cities, this prolonged decline in revenue is going to lead to pressure on liquidity. Uh, we're fortunate to the good work of current staff, previous staff, current council, previous councils, along with our revenue mix that has resulted in a stable liquidity position for us for now. Uh, but with revenue down, uh, management's gonna make all of the difference. And proactive and nimble management with robust governance policies are going to be critical to our success. Uh, and I'm reassured, um, by City Manager Hall and, and the staff. I'm reassured by your focus, uh, to delay and reprioritize projects, to update, uh, cost allocation models, improving processes and efficiencies, and defining and sticking to processes, uh, as you, as you evaluate the budgets going forward. It's gonna take a multifaceted approach to drive, uh, efficiency and I think that's gonna be critical for us for a successful outcome. So thank you so much for the hard work that you're putting into this.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Um, I want to thank you too, uh, Dante and Edmund for going through this process and really taking a deep dive into, into how we can, uh, save some, some money here in the budget. Um, I really appreciate it and I, I do think, uh, I do think that quarterly reports, now that you've explained it, are probably appropriate. Uh, I was going to ask for monthly, but I see your point about not really knowing on a monthly basis, it's not going to change much. So quarterly is probably better. Um, I think that we do have to be patient, uh, with this process because some of our revenue isn't recognized until later on. So I, I really applaud you for, for stepping up, you and Edmund, for stepping up and doing, and making this a process that is going to get through us, us through this tough time, hopefully. So those are my comments. So I would like to, uh, ask for a motion to, um, accept this resolution.
You had a mayor.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead, Sam.
Okay, thank you. Uh, do we need one or two resolutions? Can we combine the?
Do we need two or can we combine these?
It can be combined.
Okay.
Then move to adopt the resolution as stated in the staff report for both the district and the city.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Ghani?
Yes.
Hindi?
Yes.
Awasthi?
Yes.
Fruman?
Yes.
Mayor Mahonpour?
Yes.
Motion curries five zero with all council members voting yes.
And Mayor, uh, just one final comment, I want to thank all the department heads. This was a grueling, excruciating, and it will be an excruciating process. Um, but I'd like to thank all the department heads for, um, their assistance and participation in this process.
Thank you. I thank them too. Thank you for tightening your belts. So next item, please.
Item eleven, communications, eleven point one. City district warrant of demands are processed and issued on August seventeenth, twenty twenty, ACH on August eleventh, twenty twenty, and August nineteenth, twenty twenty. This is an information item, only no action required.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item twelve, reports from council subcommittees. At first, we have land use with Mahonpour and Ghani.
I don't believe we have a report because we haven't met.
Good. Correct, but the staff's working on a framework for the discussion and, uh, City Manager Hall is committed to, uh, to meeting in two weeks.
Great. Next.
Infrastructure facilities, Ghani and Fruman.
No update at this time.
Okay.
Councilmember Fruman?
Agreed.
Next item, please.
Communications and public engagement, Ghani and Hindi.
We provided an update last time. Councilmember Hindi?
Ed, thank you.
Next item.
Transportation, Ghani and Fruman.
We have not met.
Yep, but, uh, Councilmember Fruman and I would like to meet with staff when appropriate to discuss capabilities from our access to streetlight data, which, uh, we should be getting access to here pretty soon.
Great, thank you. Next item, please.
Economic development sustainability, Hindi and Ghani.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Councilmember Hindi, may I?
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Uh, this is with regards to Foster's Landing. So, uh, the third amendment, which allows us to capture rent differential for early lease terminations was recorded with the county. Staff is actively engaged with Essex for capturing that rent differential. We're in discussions, uh, with Essex regarding the post-BMR agreement, which will allow phase one tenants to stay an additional year. We received four responses to the RFP for tenant relocation services, which will be coming to council. And we've brought up preservation with Essex and there are more discussions to be had there.
Great, nice progress, progress, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next one, please.
Levy, Awasthi and Fruman.
And I, Councilmember Fruman?
We, we have not met, but, uh, I know that, uh, we heard from the community outreach group that there's discussion regarding, uh, community information sharing, information. We've gotten an email recently that, uh, covers the need to have robust community outreach. This is a project that impacts a lot of people and understanding how things are moving. I don't know that we can meet all the needs of the resident who made the request. It was, uh, pretty detailed. Um, and also it'd be nice to have information soon on a groundbreaking, not just ceremonially, but on the project.
And to add, I believe Dante was going to schedule a meeting for the subcommittee.
Yes, uh, Jin Fan will be reaching out to both of you for that meeting to schedule this.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next.
We have city manager performance review, Mahonpour and Hindi.
Uh, we haven't had any, uh, meetings on that recently. Next.
Long-term strategic planning, Mahonpour and Hindi.
We haven't met on that either. Uh, that might be something that we might want to consider, uh, setting something up. Dante.
Okay.
Uh, next item.
City special events, Awasthi and Fruman.
I think we're waiting right now for the, uh, the report from the, uh, the consultant. Unless Councilmember Awasthi has any other comments or thoughts?
No, nothing to add. So yeah, we are waiting on the report, but I have, uh, I have been, this is gonna be a challenging topic, um, once we get the report. So I've been thinking and I've talked with, um, some community members and leaders and expert. And this is just a, an initial glimpse. Um, we have to come up with a strategy on, um, how we define, how are we defining cultural versus religious events versus special events and the model for pricing? So I think it would be good, um, if we, um, scheduled some time to talk more. Um, I meant to talk more with, with you, Councilmember Fruman, as subcommittee, so. I see a lot of complicated items in that one, especially, um, with regards to staying consistent with how we are treating all the events. Um, so we ought to have a discussion soon on that.
I was kind of hoping actually that that would be part of the report that came in, that they, they'd be looking at other cities and other communities and how they do that. Because you're, you're right, it is very difficult. Sometimes it's hard to differentiate a cultural event from a religious event and how you deal with those.
Right.
We, we had an internal meeting, um, about that, uh, today and that's another meeting that Jin Fan will be reaching out to you guys about. Um, we have not received the full draft staff report, uh, or I'm sorry, report yet. Um, but when we, when we get that, which hopefully, uh, will come in the next week, we'll be setting up a meeting. Um, as you know, we got feedback from our Chamber of Commerce. We got feedback, um, um, from our department heads. And so we're gonna come back to the subcommittee prior to elevating the discussion um, about that, that topic specifically. And Jin Fan will be reaching out to both of you to set that up.
That's good. Great, thanks. Next item, please.
We have pension liability with Mahonpour and Hindi.
We haven't met on that recently. Um, is that something that we need to do, Dante?
Um, I, I would, I would ask that question to Edmund.
Any additional information we need to look at?
Um, not immediately, we're, we just, uh, received our annual, uh, valuation report. So we'll, we'll take a look at that and, um, um, I, I think once, uh, we've had a chance to digest that information, we'll, we'll, uh, reach out to the committee, uh, potentially for, uh, uh, a, a future meeting.
Okay, great, thank you. And the last one.
We have information exchange with Awasthi and Hindi.
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. I was gonna say we have ten meetings.
Okay, thank you. Next item.
Item thirteen, city district manager reports, council board statements and requests and council liaison reports.
So, city manager.
I have no additional items to report this evening.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let's start with Councilmember Hindi.
Well, I mean, it's late.
It is, I know.
So we have another closed session left, so I'm just gonna say thank you all for coming next time.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Fruman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, uh, uh, three things really. The, uh, nineteenth, we attended the virtually, virtual jobs for youth Altega Scholarship Breakfast and wanted to report that Foster City was recognized as a B-Fierce sponsor. Uh, we were recognized multiple times and specifically by the, the, uh, county manager for our involvement in that. Uh, it was pretty, uh, nice to see how the recipients were role models to their peers, um, how they've overcome hardships to get to where they are. Uh, the second one is regarding our bike lane that we added to Beach Park Boulevard. Um, some, I guess what I would consider an unintended consequence, the Beachcomber Apartments is the only multifamily, uh, land use that affronts that bike lane. And, uh, I happened to be on the Pedway one day and I saw a guy kicking the cones over for the bike path. And I said, what's, what's the problem? And he yells at me something and I went over and I started talking to him and turns out he lives in the Beachcomber Apartments, closest to Marlin. But because they can't park across the street anymore, um, he was forced to park his work truck over by Bowditch, so in a full block from home. And because of the security of tools, he had to take all of his tools out of the truck and schlep them down, uh, Beach Park Boulevard to get them home. And, um, he said, is there anything that can be done to, to help the situation? And one of the things he brought up was when, uh, Beach Park Plaza was finishing, they did some curb and sidewalk work and the red zone just north of their driveway on Beach Park got extended from the, the, uh, bus stop all the way to the driveway. So they lost a couple of parking spaces there. I mentioned to Dante and said, you know, can staff look at the red zones in the area? Things are changed right now in the sense of we don't have a lot of school traffic. Can we limit some of those a little bit more, uh, even during the short period to, uh, help that situation? Um, then also had the opportunity to speak to a school board trustee, Ken Chin, about measure T as in Tom. It's on our November ballot. Uh, he provided me with a visual aid that trustee Allison Proctor prepared to help us to understand how, uh, measure T would impact schools in Foster City. And in addition, it shows what has been accomplished through measure L and measure X funds, as well as what's to come in phase two. Um, I believe it's for measure X is the second one. So I've given that information to the city clerk, if there's a way that that can be posted on our website so our residents can see the benefits of, uh, the measures that have been passed so far and good information as to what they could expect to see, um, regarding measure, uh, T that's on the ballot in November. Thank you.
Thank you. And to Councilmember Awasthi.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I have prepared a ten-page report. Sorry for the scare, it's gonna be really quick. Um, Airport Land Use Committee, uh, meeting was canceled and Emergency Services Meeting got postponed. And I've been sharing the email updates that I'm be, I'm receiving, um, and, uh, sharing with the council and with the city manager. And commute.org meeting is on September seventeenth. That would be all. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ghani?
Uh, thank you. Uh, met with the Park and Rec Committee and, uh, Councilmember Hindi and I met with the school district. Uh, you know, some of the topics have already been covered, uh, even by Councilmember Fruman with regards to measure T. Um, there are members of our community that are actively engaged with, uh, the Board of Trustees there to, to ensure there's a solid alignment between, um, what's being asked of us and what's gonna be delivered. So more to report there, I think, from the school district as they get a little bit more, uh, refining their messaging, uh, out to Foster City. Um, and finally, the Youth Advisory Committee did not meet. That's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'll keep mine short too. Um, the long-range planning county, um, committee that I'm on, the Economic Recovery Committee, uh, is just about ready to come out with their reports, so that'll be interesting when they come out. Um, I'll share that. Uh, we had a, I had a PCE board meeting. Uh, we have a power on Peninsula update. Uh, this is for low income, we're offering clean backup power. Uh, seven, seventy-five batteries were delivered, actually. Uh, for forty-one customers were qualified to receive those, uh, forty-three batteries. And twenty-four batteries were delivered, so I'm hoping that they got delivered before we had the power outage. Um, let's see, what else? That is about it. I would like to make one request. Uh, I would like to have the sister city with, uh, Unagi, Japan, uh, to be placed on the agenda for discussion. And I'm thinking about having it, a discussion in conjunction with a fiftieth birthday party celebration. So if everybody would, um, would, is interested in that, uh, I would like to place that on the agenda. And that's it for me.
All right.
So I think we are adjourned.
Yes, for the closed session, um, fourteen point one, Conference of Legal Counselant Anticipated Litigation, one case.
Thank you. See you all there.
Bye-bye.
Good night, Priscilla.
Yep, good to see you. Yep, good to see you, Priscilla.